Okay, council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you. I understand that state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote public hearing as follows. Due to the current public health emergency, city council committees are currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make these remote hearings possible. Instructions for how the public may view and offer public testimony at public hearings of council committees are included in the public hearing notices that are published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligencer prior to the hearings, and can also be found on P H L council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. Sidney Scherls, will you please call the role to take attendance? Members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Also, please say a few brief words when responding so that your image will be displayed on screen when you speak.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, I am present.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. Councilmember Bass. Councilmember Squilla. Councilmember Brooks.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and colleagues and public, I am present.
Good afternoon.
And Councilmember Driscoll.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, colleagues. I am present.
Good afternoon. Thank you. A quorum of the committee has been established, and this hearing is now called to order. This is the public hearing of the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless regarding Resolution Number Two Zero 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 Five Seven. Ms. Scherls, will you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Two Zero Zero Five Seven, authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings to explore rent control in the city of Philadelphia.
Before we begin to hear testimony from the witnesses we have for today, everyone who has been invited to the meeting to testify should be aware that the public meeting is being recorded. Because the hearing is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. By continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. And I would like to recognize that Councilmember Bass is present as well. Prior to recognizing members for the questions or comments they have for witnesses, I will note for the record at this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this purpose. Before we begin, I'd like to make a few remarks about the legislation before this committee today. Good afternoon, everyone. We are all here today because we realize that it's time to have a serious conversation about rent control here in Philadelphia. We are in the midst of the worst housing affordability crisis we have ever seen in this city. And it's going to take every tool at our disposal to turn the tide and ensure that every Philadelphian has high-quality, stable housing. You do not have to look any further than my council district to see the life-shattering consequences of letting landlords raise rents unchecked. The pre-pandemic monthly difference between rent owed and ability to pay in my district was sixteen million dollars per month. Citywide, this number amounts to seventy-four million dollars per month, and both statistics are almost certainly higher post-COVID. The belt is tightening, even for those who can afford to pay their rent. The 2020 census found that almost one in three Philadelphians spend more than half of their income on rent, leaving little room for essentials like food and medicine, and preventing neighbors from saving for a rainy day. And this is just the tip of the iceberg, as the experts testifying in this afternoon's hearing will make evident. One of the many reasons we're in a situation where worst-case scenario statistics have become the norm is because we're letting landlords raise rent whenever they want and by however much they want, with no regard to the impact on tenants. Nowhere is this impact more profound than informally redlined neighborhoods suddenly turned, quote-unquote, desirable. Desirable because working-class Philadelphians turned them into joyful places to live. And because we do not have rent control, the black population in West Philly east of Fifty Second Street has halved, and almost none of the so-called luxury homes popping up in this amenity-rich area are in the reach of working-class black and brown residents. Let me be clear, I am not anti-development or anti-new people coming into historically black neighborhoods, but I am anti-displacement and anti-proffiting off of the bats of working-class residents without protecting their right to remain in neighborhoods their families built with their blood, sweat, and tears when no one else wanted to live there. So we need to give serious consideration to rent control, because I cannot think of a better mechanism to welcome new neighbors without displacing low-income, long-term neighbors. I am grateful to my colleague and friend, Councilmember Brooks, for hosting today's hearing and starting the formal conversation on this important topic. And thank you to the Philadelphia Rent Control Coalition and all the advocates for their work on the ground to bring this issue to the foreground. Thank you to the witnesses and public who have signed up to speak today. Your insights are appreciated. And thank you so much to the public watching at home. I know that Councilmember Brooks wants to make some opening remarks. I'll pass it to you, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the Housing Committee, and everyone who joined us today in this hearing. I am so very excited to start this important conversation. You know, from personal experience of housing security, housing as a human right has been a platform that I have continued to talk on way before becoming an elected office. And I know that people tend to have a knee-jerk reaction when they hear the word "rent control." So today, we're going to be learning and asking questions and just being more informed about rent control, rent stabilization, or whatever name that we want to give it. The reality is that Philadelphians need support right now, and we need to begin this conversation for us to move forward. Today, we will hear from local and national experts on this issue, and also renters from across the city, because I know firsthand that as I navigate communities throughout Philadelphia, and people approach me about housing insecurity or housing issues in general, I'm still very much triggered from my own experience. And I think it's important that we hear the stories from the actual people that are affected by our current renting situation here in Philadelphia. So what we will learn about more today is rent control is not a new thing to Philly. We'll talk about how our city is changing, how we have more tenants and more big landlords coming into the city, and what does that mean? We're going to talk about how rent control is an anti-violence measure that increases neighborhood stability, and that's something that we all want more of. We'll talk about how rent control supports other tenant protections in the city. Philly is a national leader in preventing homelessness and displacement because of our right to counsel, our Philadelphia eviction prevention project, our eviction diversion programs, and Renters Access Act, all things that some of us right now have supported to be at this point. And we'll also talk about how we can use rent control to effectively rent control effectively as a policy tool to protect affordable housing that we already have. So I'm looking forward to beginning this conversation and working with my colleagues on the Housing Committee to continue to protect Philadelphia renters. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other members of this committee who would like to be recognized for remarks before we begin hearing testimony? Okay. Ms. Scherls, will you please call the first panel or witness we have to testify?
On our first panel, we have Karen Harvey, Rashida Phillips, and Bruce Ticker.
Okay. Karen Harvey, are you there and connected? I see you. Can you please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony?
My name is Karen Harvey. Good afternoon, everyone. I am the Director of the Philadelphia Rent Control Coalition. Thanks to Councilmember Brooks for convening this information hearing, and to each of you for your willingness to listen and hopefully consider a new path towards safe and affordable housing for all Philadelphians. In the year-plus since COVID has taken a half step down from situation critical, the rental housing market in Philadelphia has gone completely off the rails, especially for the city's most vulnerable tenants, single-parent-headed households, people of color, and low-wage-earning citizens of every hue, in this the poorest large city in America. My mission today is to paint you a picture of why tenant protections are so important, a couple of examples, and then I will take my seat. While the neighborhood is West Philadelphia, its stories are easily applicable to any street in South, North, and Northeast Philadelphia, Germantown, or Mount Airy. Walk the streets of any residential community, and my words will ring true. The setting is a small residential street literally steps from the Fifty Second Street Business Garden. As we approach the spring of 2022, the sounds of new construction on the block have been commonplace, as now ten three-story multifamily structures with roof decks are in various stages of completion. The fear of losing their homes is a theme I hear about far too often among many who have lived in the blocks for decades. Mr. Raymond is a seventy-four-year-old newly widowed retired gentleman with his recently-deceased wife, who, I'm sorry, who with his recently-deceased wife have been raising their ten- and thirteen-year-old grandchildren since they were young boys. The loss of his life partner was devastating enough in itself, and now he has heard the rumblings of other long-term residents that the new apartment buildings will increase his property taxes to the extent that he will be pushed out of the neighborhood, which he has seen happen to friends whose property taxes have gone up. He is a proud man, unwilling to accept financial assistance. Home ownership is a source of great pride for black seniors, many of whom, like Mr. Raymond, relocated from the South seeking a better life. He receives daily calls and knocks on the door from predatory developers and real estate agents who wave cash and promises in his face, and have him nearly convinced to sell his home for mere pennies on the dollar. Mr. Raymond's story is far too commonplace, as seniors on fixed incomes with limited resources fall prey to gentrification. LT is a young, single mother of three, children ages ten, seven, and four years old. Her rent has been raised by seventy-five dollars since the new building, as buildings have gone up. Even as she started a new job a month ago, she cannot afford to live in the home she has rented for seven years any longer. Because I've acted as a mediator in the past between her and her landlord, I'm sorry, we've been able to get the increase down to fifty dollars, but her minimum-wage job is part-time at a local supermarket. Therefore, even the fifty dollars represents a hardship. According to Apartments dot com, as of October twenty twenty-two, the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in West Philadelphia in University City is eighteen hundred and sixty-four dollars, before utilities. That's a fifty percent increase since the same time last year. A three-bedroom home apartment, home or apartment, for rent averages approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. LT again is a single mother working approximately twenty hours a week, earning ten dollars an hour. Her salary of two hundred dollars weekly before taxes is barely enough to pay her six hundred and fifty-dollar-a-month current rent. Hundreds of single-parent-headed households earning minimum wage are facing eviction and homelessness this year. Without a cap on rent, people are going to be forced out of their own neighborhoods. Small landlords who might otherwise have affordable properties have no alternative except to either raise rents or sell out to those same developers, as property taxes have increased exponentially. The only ones who benefits in any of these scenarios are those same mega-developers who have been harassing Mr. Raymond. It's time to do the right thing. Homelessness isn't good for the individual or the city. Homeless children are more susceptible to poor health, a greater lack of medical care, poor grades, lowered school attendance, mental illness, poor self-esteem, and bullying by their peers. Poorly educated children become teens and adults with little hope. Prices are filled with people, many of whom saw the only way out as criminal activity. Each homeless adult represents dollars out of the city's coffers, as homeless people don't pay rent, mortgages, or taxes. They're unable to contribute to the city economically and, in fact, cause a continued rise in funding for the homeless services without any kind of return on those millions of dollars. It's up to us, everyone in this room, to advocate for them, so as to avoid reading statistics. It is imperative that we begin working to ensure safe and affordable housing for all Philadelphians. We can start right here with today's dialogue. I say this so often that I'm tired of hearing myself. To whom much is given, much is expected. If you are among the fortunate few, by comparison, those for whom housing isn't an issue, take the pledge and agree to work with us, so that every child has a warm place to lay their head at night. I've never met anyone whose preference was to sleep in their car. Working together, we can bring a newer, safer existence to all Philadelphians. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harvey, for being here today and for your work. Rashida Phillips, are you there and connected?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful. Good afternoon. Good to see you. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
My name is Rashida Phillips. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm the Director of Housing at Policy Link, a national research and action institute, and previously served as Managing Attorney of Housing Policy at Community Legal Services of Philadelphia. Thank you so much for having this hearing today, and I'm grateful to have worked with Philadelphia City Council for over a decade to support and advocate on behalf of tenants. Like many other cities around the country, Philadelphia is wrestling with a displacement crisis that is forcing primarily people of color and low-income renters to the edges of or out of the city. Philadelphia households are facing significant displacement pressures as rents continue to rise and wages remain stagnant. A household with two minimum-wage workers in Philadelphia cannot afford the median rent in many of the city's zip codes. The National Low-Income Housing Coalition's recent report, for example, shows that one minimum-wage worker in Philadelphia would need to work three-point-four full-time jobs to afford a two-bedroom apartment. Not two jobs, not three jobs, three-point-four full-time jobs to afford a two-bedroom apartment in the city. Housing is the single-largest expense for most households, and far too many pay too much for housing, particularly low-income renters. According to the National Equity Atlas, the total disposable income for renters in Philadelphia in 2019 would have been one-point-eight billion dollars more if renters paid only what they could afford on housing. If renters weren't spending so much of their incomes on rent, they could spend more on family needs and in the community. Renters are vital to Philadelphia's economic, social, and cultural vitality, but are burdened by rising rents and stagnant wages, and often treated like they're less than, until they become future homeowners. High housing costs squeeze family budgets, leaving them few resources to pay for other expenses, save for emergencies, or make long-term investments. Rent stabilization is one of the most effective housing stability tools being used across the country. It's been in place in the U.S. for over one hundred years and exists in over one hundred and eighty jurisdictions. You may ask, why has such a policy been so durable and widespread? Quite simply because it works. Empirical evidence shows that rent stabilization increases housing stability and affordability for current tenants. It's unrivaled in speed, scale, and cost effectiveness. While building a single unit of affordable housing may take years and cost upwards of half a million dollars, rent stabilization is the only policy tool that can provide immediate relief and covers most renters. It's a necessary policy that complements and reinforces efforts to increase housing supply. Nor does it have to be a protections versus supply problem. The city can take a tailored approach that works for the community, that protects existing residents, that builds for new ones, and that level sets. Building takes time, so the housing you are in is the most affordable. The data shows that a rent cap would work in Philadelphia to balance the need for long-term housing stability and owner profits and returns. The proof is in Philadelphia's history of annual rent increases. Between 2015 and 2020, the Economy League found that the average rate of change in rent from the previous year in the Philadelphia metro area ranged from one-point-seven percent to three-point-three percent. That means that even in the absence of a rent stabilization policy, property owners and investors were able to operate freely, setting and increasing rents as much as they wanted without exceeding three-point-three percent annual rent increases. This number is really key, because it represents a reasonable annual rent increase that allows owners and investors to get their return. Furthermore, Philadelphia residents have survived a foreclosure crisis, a pandemic, an economic recession, in just under two decades. All large, life-changing, city-changing, world-changing events outside of their control that have radically shifted the conditions controlling their livelihoods and their homes. Historically, Philadelphia was a place where homes were predominantly owned by homeowners and small local landlords who were rooted in their communities. But that is changing. In 2021, Pew and Reinvestment Fund Research found that even though only two percent of landlords in Philadelphia have more than twenty-five units, these large landlords own more than half of the city's rental units. This has really important implications for the housing market and renters. The share of the housing stock that is owned by corporate and private equity landlords has accelerated in recent years, starting with the foreclosure crisis, where institutional investors swooped in, bought up homes from homeowners, many of whom were first-time black and brown homeowners who were forced to be foreclosed on. Since then, multiple reports have documented the harms associated with corporate landlords, whether it's increased eviction fees, more junk fees to higher rent hikes. This represents an increased risk of housing instability for renters and the entire city. As these corporate landlords maximize the wealth they can extract from communities, they accumulate more capital with which they use to outbid local property owners and prospective homeowners, further tilting the scales in favor of external control of Philadelphia's historically locally-held housing stock. This is a trend that has to be stopped, and rent stabilization, in addition to other policies that prevent predatory rental practices, will disincentivize and prevent the increased concentration of corporate ownership. As you've heard already, rent stabilization is more effective when it's paired with other protections, things that we already have, fortunately, in Philadelphia. Things like Just Cause Eviction, which helps prevent landlords from evicting tenants in order to raise rents. Other complementary policies include proactive code enforcement and rental registries to improve the transparency of ownership and increase quality of housing. I'll wrap up soon, but just want to say that aside from the direct impact of increased housing stability and long-term affordability for renters, rent stabilization will have other spillover effects that help to address other issues in our complex housing crisis. For instance, as new infrastructure investments and housing development take place across Philadelphia, black and brown residents of historically disinvested neighborhoods will feel the impact, and they already do, in the form of rising property values and thus rent hikes. And so rent control does ensure that the people who have lived in and sustained historically disinvested neighborhoods are able to stay in those communities in which they put down roots and benefit from those new investments, whether they're transit, whether they're housing, or infrastructure-related. I'll also just say quickly that, in addition, rent stabilization would alleviate some of the pressures on the Philadelphia Housing Authority to meet the growing need for subsidized housing for people with no or very low-income seniors and people with disabilities who have no options in a private market. Last thing I say before I'll go, I just want to share a little bit of a personal story. Thinking about how different it was for me fifteen or twenty years ago, a young, single-parent and college student for whom stable housing was crucial. I didn't have a family home to stay in or any other means of affordable housing, and like thousands of others, I had entered my name on the Philadelphia Housing Authority waitlist as soon as I had the chance leaving high school, but it would be years until my name moved up on it. It was a struggle, but with financial aid grants, employment income, I was able to afford a two-bedroom apartment in Brewery Town for eight hundred dollars a month and stay in the area until I graduated law school, bought my first home in that same area years later with a desire to continue investing in the community that I felt had invested in me, whether it was the small landlord who took a chance on me while I was still building up my credit history, or the local tax business who's done my taxes since college. It's ironic that my now-twenty-four-year-old child is not able to access reasonable or affordable housing that would enable them to live on their own without having to work nearly three-and-a-half jobs, or that they can't continue living in the community that they grew up in if they chose to live alone. Last thing I'll say is that Philadelphia is not alone in considering this policy. In the past five years, over a dozen cities and states have passed new policies or strengthened pre-existing rent stabilization policies. These policies are not one-size-fits-all. They should not be painted with a broad brush. These policies are instead designed to accommodate and fit local housing markets, conditions, and needs. We look forward to continuing to work with Philadelphia City Council, housing advocates, organizers, impacted tenants, landlords, and community members to continue to support and develop these policies. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much, Rashida, for being here today, for sharing your personal story, and for your critical work in this area. Bruce Ticker, are you there and connected?
Hello?
Wonderful. Can you please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony?
Yeah, my name is Bruce Ticker, and I'm here today to speak in support of rent control in Philadelphia. Thank you, Committee Chair Gautier and Councilmember Kendra Brooks for putting this hearing together to discuss the importance of preserving and stabilizing our communities. To go off script for a moment, I've been listening intently to the two persons before me, and I'm really shocked at the conditions I'm hearing about. My situation is...
Mr. Ticker? Can you still hear us? Council support?
It looks like the participant is having some technical issues. We're going to try to call him back into the meeting.
Okay, we'll give you some time to do that.
Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Brooks, I see you have questions. Maybe we can take at least one of your questions before Mr. Ticker comes back.
Alrighty, Madam Chair. So I have a question for Ms. Harvey. What is the effect of someone being forced out of their community by massive rent hikes and skyrocketing home prices? And what do you think will happen if we don't pass some level of rent control in Philadelphia?
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system.
Okay, I'm sorry. Causes instability, especially for a family. Children are connected to their communities by their friends and by the school that they attend. Having to move away from those two very vital parts of their everyday life makes life more difficult for those children, and they start to experience they start to experience discomfort in going to school, which can then cause a child to stop going to school regularly and lead to a life that is not conducive to anything that their parents may have had in mind for them. As to the second part of your question, the more that that continues, the more unstable a living situation becomes. And that separates people, children and adults, from medical care, from education, from church, all those things that have been able to be done historically in one's own community. It seems that as our medical care has increased and there's more neighborhood businesses, folks who live in those neighborhoods are not able to pay for them and are pushed out so that people can come back in from outside of the city and take advantage of those accoutrements that folks in our communities have become able to use. I'm sorry. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, Ms. Harvey, thank you so much. My next question is for Ms. Phillips. So what is the impact on our city and on Philadelphians when only the top two percent of the landlords own more than half of the city's rental units?
Sorry, but that part of the, so part of what happens when we have corporate landlords who are taking over the city, neighbors, people who live in these units, right, are treated very, as if they're living in substandard housing often, right? Because a lot of what the corporate landlords and corporate owners are trying to do is maximize their profits, and so that means cutting and skimping on other things. That means that, you know, maintenance is getting deferred. People are continuing to live in worse conditions as their rents are raising. You may also not know your landlord. You may not be able, if it's a corporate landlord, they may not be located in the city. So they may not be contributing back to the city in the ways that you would expect. And also, it's challenging for tenants to be able to connect with those landlords, to be able to, you know, get things done. And then you see that these landlords also tend to not know local laws. They tend to not know that they need to get their landlord license and that they need to follow certain steps before they try to evict a person, right? They're operating, they may be coming from New York, as we see a lot of folks coming from to buy properties in the city, right? And they're operating off of what they think. And they're operating off of what they think is the law, but they're not actually following the law. And so you see heightened evictions. You see alongside of those heightened rents, which also lead to evictions because people can't pay high rent hikes in a short period of time. If they're told your rent's going to be raised 15% in the next few months, right? Where are you going to get that extra income? So that's just some of the impacts that we see from corporate landlords and corporate ownership. But, you know, on the larger scale, what it means is that Philadelphia doesn't own Philadelphia anymore. It's not Philadelphia residents. It's not Philadelphia landlords. And that's fine, right? But as long as we know what that means and what the impact of that is, and the impact is greater housing instability for the city at large.
And my next question is, how will rent control benefit historically disinvested neighborhoods, like my neighborhood in North Philly? And what will happen if we don't pass some level of rent control soon?
So one of the big things that rent control does, right, is that it ensures that households are less housing cost burdened by limiting those rent increases. So that's the biggest thing that it can do, because it can do that immediately. And so when communities, right, are only paying what they can afford towards rent, which is anything that's above 30% of their income being paid towards rent, which we see, we see people paying almost 50% or more towards rent, particularly lower-income households, right? So those households are cost-burdened. When you're cost-burdened, the rent eats first, right? So that means that your health is suffering, your community's health is suffering, because all of your money's going towards that rent. That means you're not able to pay bills on time. That means that if you have medical health issues, even if you don't have health issues, right, something pops up, you're not able to address that because the rent eats first. You're worried about being evicted. You're worried about... So again, the larger impacts of that, like I said, Philadelphia alone, if people, if we had rent control, or if people were not paying more than 30% of their income towards their rent, Philadelphia would have $1.8 billion. That's a big number in disposable income. So again, that means that folks are able to pay for childcare. They're able to pay for transportation to get to work. They're able to do the things that they need to do. They're able to buy groceries. They're able to save long-term. They're able to buy homes down the line because they're able to save that money because they're not paying 50%, 60%, having to work four jobs just to pay the rent. So that's some of what we would see if we had rent control. We would see more stable communities, more stable households, and a more stable Philadelphia, a more healthy, thriving Philadelphia.
Thank you so much, Ms. Phillips. Madam Chair, my other question was for Mr. Ticker, and I don't know if we got him back on line yet.
He's not back yet.
Jones has a question. I think he's waiting.
Yes. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Phillips. I always enjoy your testimony. And I'm going to quote you, "The rent eats first." I'm going to hashtag that and use that. Couple of quick questions. To what degree, and if you know it, fine. If you don't, please provide it to the chair so that she can distribute it to us. How has homeownership given way to rental situations in Philadelphia? And are there maps that illustrate where?
Yes, I don't know that off the top of my head. I could definitely get some of that information. But just generally speaking, right, when we think about how Philadelphia's housing stock has looked and how ownership has looked, Philadelphia has traditionally been a city of homeowners. Our homeownership rate has been traditionally over 60%. And then in 2008, right, we had that foreclosure crisis, and we saw those demographics shift dramatically, right? And so now we're in a situation where that homeownership rate is building back up, but it's about half and half now. There are more renters in the city, which means that, right, we need to be paying more attention to what renters need and how we protect them. And then also, right, as we know, homeownership is not an end-all-be-all too, right? If you're a low-income homeowner, you're also seeing some of the same issues that low-income tenants are seeing, right? You're still having issues sometimes making the mortgage. You're still having issues with repairs and things like that. So, you know, it's not a situation that just because you're a homeowner, that means everything is good, right? So in a city like Philadelphia, we have to look at both things and see how both things impact each other. But again, the fact that we have more renters in the city and that the demographics have shifted dramatically means that, you know, there's more protections we need to be thinking about for renters. And we did have over the years, right, some of the really amazing things that you all have championed in terms of Just Cause. These things go hand-in-hand, right? Just Cause is one great protection, but without something like rent control, it's not as effective as it could be in terms of protecting renters.
So the reason I asked about the mapping, I'm beginning to see in particular parts of my district, where I grew up, actually, where, you know, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Smith used to own the house, is no longer owned. It is a renters unit, not stereotyping any of that, but there is a different level of involvement often that comes with that. The other thing that I'm asking, and again, you don't have to have the answer. If you know where the answer is, we can find it. To what degree are major investment groups coming into Philadelphia to buy our housing stock to turn it into a rental community? And how is that impacting what we're seeing that, that kind of... I'm not from Philadelphia, don't know the difference between Washington Avenue and Washington Lane, but I know my dividends come monthly. Is that been a factor?
So that is something that I can... We'll have to get additional information and share back with you all, but studies have been done showing some of the shifts in ownership in Philadelphia. And there may be some studies around the rate of corporate ownership. But just to speak back to something you just mentioned, that again, you're right, there is a difference, right, in terms of stability that a homeowner brings to a community versus a renter. And it's because of lack of renter protections that allow renters to have that same level of stability, understanding that not everybody's going to be able to be a homeowner. So, right, why not stabilize renters to make them be able to stay in communities just as long as homeowners and be able to contribute back to those communities? So I just wanted to speak to that, but I can definitely try to get you some additional information.
I didn't expect total answers, but something for us to think about as we contemplate what we're doing here. Finally, one of the concerns that has been raised that people like Postman and, you know, the schoolteacher that invest in rental properties, what impact will this have on their ability to maintain those kinds of small investments? Not the big mega corporate folk that are swooping in here, but how do we make sure that this is still a viable retirement investment in a lot of cases for them and that we don't price them out of situations? Has there been any thought given to that component of landlords?
Absolutely. And one of my colleagues will be on, I think, one of the next panels, Tram Wong, and she can speak to that more specifically, particularly because of her experience developing rent control policies in St. Paul. But just to say that these policies can be locally designed to ensure, right, that again, it works for Philadelphia. It works for all parties involved. You know, again, just that statistic I mentioned earlier, that naturally landlords in Philadelphia are not raising rents more than 3.3%. And so a rent cap does make sense in Philadelphia because it's sort of in line with what's already happening. And so, you know, just on that front, we don't think it will have a bad, a negative impact on landlords. I think it can be designed to support everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Member Brooks, for raising this issue and discussion.
Thank you so much. I have a couple of questions for Rashida. First, you know, we were in a hearing on Monday about discrimination, income source discrimination, and the major impact that's having on people who are trying to use housing vouchers to obtain affordable housing. Can you talk a little about the impact on rent control? You know, the impact that rent control would have on that issue?
Yeah, I think so. There's many challenges with vouchers, one of them being voucher discrimination, people being able to access vouchers. But then it's just getting the voucher, period, right? As we know, there is a very long waitlist in Philadelphia for people to be able to access vouchers. And even with new voucher resources, right, we still have thousands and thousands of people who need to have some subsidy for their rent or some limitation or some way of being able to afford their rent. And so rent control would support that. It would support all the people who are not able to access the voucher program for various reasons, won't need a voucher, right? Because we will have a rent system, rent regime in Philadelphia that is fair and that will help folks be able to afford and live in their units. So that's the immediate connection between those two issues, that having rent control will help to alleviate the voucher program and public housing, which does not unfortunately have the resources that it needs to serve all low-income Philadelphians who need affordable housing.
Thank you. I was really concerned to hear you say that a Philadelphian with a minimum wage job, or a minimum wage worker, rather, in Philadelphia would need to work 3.4 full-time, I think you said, full-time jobs to afford a two-bedroom apartment. Can you talk more about that and, you know, what that means for the average person living in our neighborhoods?
Yeah, so it means a lot. I mean, one human can't work 3.4 jobs. It's just not even possible. And so what does that mean for families? What does that mean for folks who have to do things like doubling up, right? And we just had this extreme tragedy in Philadelphia as a result of families being forced to occupy homes that are too small for them. That is what we'll see more of. We'll see more folks in situations where they're not safe, where their housing is not safe because they're just doing what they can because they're doing what they can afford. And so that forces them into situations that are just not healthy and normal. So, and I won't say not normal, not normal meaning the home is too small to accommodate their families and other things. So that's what we'll see. We'll see more of that kind of dangerous circumstances happening. I hate to say that, but that's the outcome of a situation where folks, by and large, in the city, in the poorest, largest city in the country, cannot afford rent and have to work four or five jobs that they can't get, right? Because folks also have issues accessing stable job opportunities. So all these things are interlinked. We can't just see this as a jobs issue and then a housing issue. These things are absolutely interlinked. And then also just thinking about, again, the health of Philadelphians, the ability of black and brown folks to have a life outside of working, be able to take care of their families, be able to have fun, be able to sleep, be able to rest, you know, just to get into other things, right? Black people sleep less than other people, right? And so if we're having to work three jobs, how are we able to stay healthy, maintain our families, these things? So, you know, that's a little bit more abstract, but it's absolutely an outcome of these kind of situations that Philadelphians are dealing with now. And again, rent stabilization immediately can impact that and support folks being able to have healthy lifestyles and stable homes.
Thank you so much to you and everyone on this panel. Ms. Scherl, can you call the next panel to testify?
Sarah Roberts, Tram Wong, Oksana Maranova, Jimmy Dillon.
Sarah Roberts, are you there and connected?
Hi, yes.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi, good to see you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
My name is Sarah Roberts. Good afternoon, members. I'm Sarah. I've lived in Philadelphia for 15 years, and I've been a landlord for 12 years in the city, actually in your district, Councilmember Gautier. And I'm here today to testify in support of rent control as an important step to ending the housing crisis that brings us all here today. Housing prices are skyrocketing out of control. My wife and I were fortunate to be able to buy our current house when we did because since 2017, the average assessed value of Philadelphia houses has increased over 50%. Many landlords have taken advantage of how impossible it is for the average Philadelphian to buy a home by increasing rents exorbitantly, much higher than they need to. The rapidly rising rents priced my neighbors out of their community, where they grow up, where their friends live, where their children go to school, where they fall in love with the city. We need, and I need, rent control for community stability. This is especially important for me as someone who values community. I want my renter friends and neighbors to have the same opportunity for stable housing as homeowners, so they can stay and build our community and raise a family. But at the current rate, where home values are on pace to double in less than a decade and with no barriers to landlords raising rents, most current renters won't be able to afford to stay in their current home for long. This is personal to me. When I have kids, I want them to grow up on a block where longtime community members know and look out for them, not where our neighbors get constantly priced out. If we care about creating safe and welcoming neighborhoods conducive to raising families, we'll need rent control to get there before the last of our longstanding communities are lost to gentrification and displacement. And I want to speak now to what I anticipate will be some pushback to the...
Sarah?
Yeah?
You're going in and out a little bit, and it sounds like you're going to say something really important, so I want to make sure we can hear you.
Thank you so much. I'm not a public speaker and I'm a little bit quiet, so I'm just going to get a little bit closer to my speaker. Is this better? All right. Thank you so much for letting me know. All right. Let me just say it again. Rent control will not burden good-faith landlords. As someone living with chronic illness, I need rental income and the security it brings to my future retirement. But that survival doesn't require me to raise tenants' rent 10% annually, a rate that many Philadelphia landlords have been exceeding in the last several years. Rent control just limits the level that rent can be raised. I will still make a good income from my property under rent control, just as thousands of others do in many cities with rent control. I know that some landlords try to justify huge hikes in rent by pointing to increases in property taxes, but the rent increases that many landlords have been imposing on renters are far higher than we need to cover the taxes. I know this because I see my own finances. Rent control allows for increases in rent, just not the exploitative increases that Philadelphians have experienced recently. I know that others will talk about how rent control makes it impossible to repair our properties. But existing rent control legislation allows landlords to get back the cost of repairs through rent increases, covering the cost of the repair. Rent control just prevents large increases in rent unrelated to things like repairs. The current rental market without rent control creates an unethical race to the bottom as investors, who are often not even Philadelphians, value profit over people and grab up as many properties as they can. They squeeze the maximum profit they can out of each property in this tight rental market because renters are desperate. And then these investors know that whenever they want to sell, there's a line of corporate buyers standing at the ready, none of whom care about Philadelphians the way that I hope those of us in this room all do. Everyone knows that corporate landlords have less concern for property maintenance than small landlords like myself, who live in the neighborhoods they rent property in. It's actually the small landlords like me who could increase their portfolios of rental properties under rent control because out-of-state institutional investors will lose their unlimited ability to profit off the backs of Philly residents. Dear City Council, I beg you to please begin the process of establishing a rent control policy that stabilizes our communities, protects residents, and my friends from having to leave Philadelphia, and still allows landlords, small landlords like me, to make good income from our property. We're not too late, but we have to start now before our housing crisis gets even worse. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you so much, Sarah, and thank you for the values that you are displaying in your business as a landlord and for sharing that today. It's a really critical perspective. Tram Wong, are you there and connected?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Can you please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Tram Wong, and I'm a senior associate at PolicyLink. I work with dozens of jurisdictions across the country at every level of government to study, pass, and implement and improve tenant protection and community stabilization policies, including rent stabilization. Thanks for the opportunity to support the city's goals of making Philadelphia a place, excuse me, where all people, regardless of race, class, or zip code, can live and... excuse me, where all people, regardless of race, class, or zip code, can live and thrive. When it comes to housing stability and affordability, it is clear what works. What works is increased federal, state, and local investments in building more deeply and permanently affordable housing. What works is a spectrum of housing solutions from homeownership programs to increasing the supply of housing in some markets in which there's the most need, so at the lowest income levels. And most importantly, what works is tenant protection policies to increase access to stable housing, such as Just Cause Protections, Right to Counsel for Tenants, changes to tenant screening policies to reduce discrimination, and of course, rent stabilization to ensure that people who have a place to call home can stay in their homes. Increasing housing supply alone is not enough to address the housing crisis. These production oriented solutions must be paired with protections to prevent displacement and protect the current supply of housing that is affordable to residents. In the absence of rent stabilization, affordable housing production goals become a perpetually moving goalpost with affordable units being removed from the market every day as rents continue to skyrocket. Rent stabilization is just one part of the solution, but the housing crisis cannot be solved without it. The federal government implements one of the strongest rent stabilization programs in existence for homeowners, actually, through fixed interest rate mortgages, which provides borrowers with steady predictable monthly housing payments for the entire duration of their loan. We see fifteen or thirty years. These forms of consumer protections are not new. However, seeing tenants as consumers worthy of protections can be a new concept for many. For example, states have enacted regulations that protect consumers from predatory payday lending activity by implementing interest rate caps. So these policies are not new. Furthermore, there is a wealth of empirical evidence and research demonstrating the positive impacts of rent stabilization, as well as data addressing the myths that have been perpetuated by groups who have a financial interest in preventing or weakening rent stabilization. And I'll just mention a few of them. A report from USC Dornsey, I'm sorry, which included a robust literature review of rent stabilization, found that rent stabilization promotes resident stability and can therefore help to slow down the displacement dimension of gentrification. A study by researchers at the University of Pennsylvania found that rent stabilization disproportionately benefits woman headed households who are more likely to rent and more likely to be rent burdened, especially women of color. Study from the University of Minnesota, which included financial modeling with actual real estate performers, found that a rent cap equal to seventy five percent of CPI or inflation would allow for average and median levels of investor returns. Multiple longitudinal studies comparing New Jersey municipalities with and without moderate rent stabilization found no significant relationship between rent stabilization and new housing construction. Furthermore, the Urban Displacement Project at UC Berkeley assessed housing production from two thousand seven to twenty thirteen and found that the six cities with rent stabilization in the Bay Area produced more housing units per capita than cities without rent stabilization, which is not to say that rent stabilization produces units, because we know that it stabilizes rents, but that is to say that there are much larger forces at play when it comes to what can be developed and built in the city. A comprehensive study of the rental housing market in Washington DC found a positive relationship between rent stabilization and building maintenance. Low income renters said that rent regulation actually made them more willing to insist on repairs because they no longer feared retaliation by economic eviction. There's an abundance of research and evidence pointing to the effectiveness of rent stabilization. And in considering this policy, Philadelphia joins over one hundred and eighty other jurisdictions adding this tool to its anti-displacement toolbox. The benefits of following the footsteps of other jurisdictions includes learning from the experiences of other places. For example, Washington DC experienced increased condo conversions after the implementation of rent control and later responded by passing condo conversion laws to prevent the loss of units in the rental housing market. That's an important lesson learned. Another example is in the many cities and states that passed CPI or inflation based rent cap formulas prior to twenty twenty. Now, in times of record inflation, they're realizing that annual rent caps that are equal to CPI or CPI plus seven percent, for example, are much too high. Cities and states are going back to city councils and state legislatures to amend those formulas with additional caps to provide additional protections for tenants. Rent stabilization policies vary across the country, and the right policy design can be achieved to balance the needs of all Philadelphians. We look forward to continuing to work with the city council to develop a variety of housing policies to advance racial and economic justice. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Councilmember, you're on mute. I'm sorry about that. Thanks to the last testifier for your testimony and your work. Senator Dillon, are you there and connected?
I am councilmember. How are you?
I am well. Thank you so much for joining us today. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. My name is Senator Jimmy Dillon. And I'd like to begin today by thank you, Councilmember Brooks, for inviting me to speak on an issue that I know has become incredibly important to everybody here in Philadelphia, but not here, just in Philly, but across the state of the Commonwealth. I know I won't be the first to say that every American around has seen prices for their essentials grow up in the past few years. I knew, but every day since I've been sworn into office here, neighbors and community members have been pounding on my doors here at my office, asking for assistance in obviously small things like keeping their heads in households above water. Although every story is different, the root cause is very simple and remains the same for everyone. Their household income has not been able to keep up with the prices they are being charged and facing these days. Now, I believe it's a two step approach to this press pressure countless Philadelphians are facing right now. We need to lift wages and bring costs down, which is why I'm excited to be here today to talk about keeping costs down in the most crucial and expensive area of most of us offense, excuse me, face today, which is rent. As landlords have scrambled to recoup their losses during the pandemic, rent prices have skyrocketed. My staff and I have heard stories from constituents on their monthly rates being increased almost up to, here's a staggering number for everybody, fifty percent of what they were just paying one year ago. This isn't right. This isn't fair. And it's sure and it's for sure is not reasonable. For landlords, this is a matter of dollar and cents. But for renters, this is the difference between having a roof over your head or having to uproot their families or even worse, being left out on the street. Because of this, my colleague, Senator Amanda Capelletti, and I will be introducing a bill to stabilize rent prices across the Commonwealth. I won't get into the weeds here, but it will address landlords with fifteen units or more and the prices that they can set over a year to a reasonable standard while taking into account local factors in that decision. This bill, along with the actions of met by municipal partners like Councilmember Brooks, will allow Pennsylvanians the ability to budget accordingly when they know exactly what their rent prices may be a year from now. Currently, there's no regulation in this space. Renting Philadelphians currently can and have see increases of twenty, thirty, forty, and up to fifty percent of whatever their landlord wants to charge them. It's time for a change for this. It's time for renters to have a a level of stability in their homes that allows them to keep a roof over their head and provide for their families to grow wealth and enjoy a standard living that I know many Philadelphians and Pennsylvanians can provide. Thank you again, councilmembers, for this opportunity to stand in pursuit with you on this crucial mission. Anyone has any questions or anything? I could be feel take a few. Not. Thank you again for having me, everyone.
Thank you so much, Senator, and thanks for your great work at the state level. Do you have to hop off and therefore we need to take questions now, or can you wait for the next?
I do not. I can hang for. Let me look at my calendar here. I have thirty minutes.
Okay, okay. You'll be done with this panel before thirty minutes. So thank you. Thanks. Axana Maronova, are you there and connected?
I am, yes.
Can you please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony?
My name is Axana Maronova. Thank you so much to the Housing Committee for holding this hearing on rent regulation. I'm a senior policy analyst at the Community Service Society of New York. We're a leading nonprofit that promotes economic opportunity for all New Yorkers. And tenant stability and housing affordability are central to that mission. And as part of our work, we have long monitored and researched New York City's rent stabilization system. My remarks will primarily cover some of the benefits of rent regulation that we have observed in New York City and also address a frequent concern that often comes up about rent regulation. First, rent regulation benefits low income renters the most. In our state, there are over a million of rent regulated units, and the vast majority of those are in New York City, about a million and twenty two thousand. Rent regulation is critical for low income tenants. There are more low income people living in rent regulated apartments, about three hundred and sixty five thousand than in subsidized and public housing combined in New York City. Seventy six percent identify as black, Hispanic, or Asian, and nearly half are immigrant households. Rent stabilized housing households are also more likely to be headed by women and to include senior citizens than those that are in unregulated housing. As a concept, rent regulation mediates the relationship between tenants and landlords, two parties that don't have equal bargaining power, especially in gentrifying neighborhoods. The system corrects this imbalance by defining a process for determining rents, outlining basic habitability standards, providing tenants with security of tenure, and setting limits on security deposits and other types of fees. As with any sets of rights, rent regulation is not income tested, meaning that renters of all incomes benefit without any public subsidy, which is extremely important. However, similar to antitrust laws, consumer protections, and other types of regulations that are imposed by governments, low income tenants who have the least choice within the rental market often benefit the most, and it's definitely what we see in New York. Second, rent regulation acts as a counterbalance to displacement and homelessness. On the neighborhood level, rent regulation acts as a bulwark against gentrification, helping residents stay in their apartments on like a very basic level. In a tight housing market, where the majority of low income renters are rent burdened, which is certainly the case in New York City, and I suspect is also probably the case in Philly, limits on unscrupulous rent increases and the right to a lease renewal become incredibly important for keeping people in their homes. In New York, rent regulation has acted as a stabilizing force during a pandemic driven resurgence of speculation on multifamily properties. According to latest data collected by our housing agency, the median monthly rent in rent regulated units was fourteen hundred dollars, which was four hundred and twenty five dollars lower than in unregulated rentals. More strikingly, asking rents, so rents for apartments that are open and available for rental on the market in unregulated apartments in Manhattan have reached an average of four thousand dollars a month. Obviously, this is completely out of reach for the majority of people living in New York. And finally, to get to a concern that often comes up about rent regulation, as as a system, it does not undermine responsible landlords and doesn't cause the decline of physical conditions within buildings. Evidence based research shows, as the previous speaker has covered really well, that rent regulation doesn't undermine conditions. According to data collected by our city's rent guidelines board, landlords of stabilized buildings generally spend about fifty nine to sixty five cents out of every revenue dollar on operations, thus generating about thirty five to forty one cents of income. Despite the pandemic and other economic shocks that have appeared in New York City over the past thirty years, inflation adjusted net operating income among rent stabilized properties has gone up by forty seven percent since nineteen ninety. So there's plenty of revenue for landlords to be able to make repairs and upgrade their properties if they want to, that is being generated in rent stabilized properties. I'll end there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your work and for being here today. Councilmember Brooks, do you have any questions for this panel?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'll just kind of try to go in. Maybe I'll start with Senator Dillon because he might have to hop off. So what situations have you seen from your neighbors and folks in the district that kind of made you want to pursue this rent control? You talked about it a little bit, but is there anything particular that stood out for you?
No, Kendra, it's been more or less the scenario of, you know, me being born and raised here in northeast Philadelphia. I've I've come from the youth sector through things, but I've been helping families and children all across southeastern PA when, you know, it's it's come to things. So just through my natural network of people, you know, when they found that I got elected, it was all right, you know, now there's ways for him to help his neighborhoods, help his communities, and help help his families and stuff from a situation that's not only in the youth sector anymore. So you know, it's normal phone calls, normal text messages, normal people popping into the office just saying, hey, I'm wondering if you can help me in this realm. And obviously, we we brainstorm ourselves as a staff up here and I I I use my mentors and I use the people that are, you know, from from the 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 local legislators to bounce ideas and thoughts off of. So what I'm hearing that, you know, a a single mom who has a waitressing position at a restaurant who's working four days a week making money to provide her kids, you know, clothing and their rent and their their schooling, you know, sending their kids to Catholic schools on top of things. And her rent is going from thirteen hundred dollars that she's been in there for over ten years to her receiving a notice from her landlord saying, oh, by the way, you have sixty days to let me know if you want to stay in this house and your rent's going to be twenty one hundred dollars. And there's no regulation on this. So I looked into it and I'm like, how is this legal where they're literally asking and and, you know, to the dissatisfaction of things. This young lady ended up moving back to Arkansas with her family and stuff and out of Philadelphia. Again, because people are finding out what houses and what rent is going for in their neighborhoods. And because people have been locked in for so long to rents, they're like, well, I'm missing out on thousands of dollars here and I'm going to try and make up for this money because, you know, maybe I lost money during the pandemic through things. So that's just one example of things, but I'm sure that everybody on this panel here knows somebody who's been affected by just ridiculously high triggered rent costs with no regulations on them. So in my act and and my ability as a senator here, it's important for me to be able to pass some legislation here to try and control these things so that families are 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 not facing such dire situations.
Yeah, thank you so much for that because actually we just had a rally, the Rent Control Coalition had a rally outside City Hall. And just as soon as I finished speaking, I had four people lined up. I had to call my constituent services folks outside to help support folks that just heard what they were talking about. So that's why I asked that question just to see if our experiences are the same as me being a municipally elected official and then you're on a state level. So to that point, how much support do you think you'll receive with your colleagues across the state around rent stabilization? Because I've heard this even in like growing smaller regions that this is an issue.
I'm sure that it's something that is being faced in all sixty seven counties throughout Pennsylvania through things, you know. You know, we've received some support from most of our centers across the state in terms of this. Councilmember Brooks, you'll understand from my end of things, I'm not an extremist. I'm very down the middle when it comes to things and I ultimately am here to protect, you know, my constituents and the people of Philadelphia. And when I hear of extreme things like that, it's my job to attack them through things. But just for an example, right now, we've had some co sponsorship on this along with Senator Capelletti and myself from Senator Haywood, Senator Street, and Senator John Kane through things. So again, I feel like I have the ability to reach out on both sides of the aisle up there when it comes to mainstreaming here and protecting people across the Commonwealth where you know, there's there's a lot of you. You look up some of these people who own these properties, you know, in the systems, and you see either, you know, a non Philadelphia based unit or organization who owns them. You see a New York corporation who owns these things and they're they're not from the area. They're not from the community. They don't understands the ups and downs of what's happening down here. They say, hey, I'm buying an investment property. I'm going to find out what the rent is around there and that's what I'm going to make it. And if the family can't meet those needs or anything at all, they're going to be on their way out. I'm going to find somebody new. And that's not acceptable in my book.
Thank you so much for your support because I think some people sometimes see me as an extremist and even having this conversation. So I'm glad to hear that it's a conversation that we can have across the aisle and, you know, about real life situations, just just to support people across the Commonwealth. So thank you for coming out. My next question is for Sarah Roberts. Do you see sensible limits on rental increases as a threat to your ability to make income for your Do you see sensible limits on rental increases as a threat to your ability to make income for your, for renting out your own?
Definitely, definitely not. I mean, I wouldn't be here testifying in support of rent control if I did see it as a threat. To me, I want to be the kind of businessperson that can make a good living and live in a community that feels good and that is stable and safe. And to me, just focusing on trying to like raise rents as much as possible while wrecking our community is counterintuitive to me, so definitely not.
So in your experience, have you seen a lot of stability in your renters? Like, do tenants that you have, do they tend to stay longer and, you know, be productive members of the community?
Yeah, definitely. So that's something we really prioritize. We like to do multi-year leases with people if it's possible. One of our longest-term tenants was a single mom who had a kid with autism, and she worked as a music teacher. And we all know that, like, the world needs more music teachers. And yeah, just being able to, you know, really provide for my own retirement without being immoral feels very doable to me, and I think that's what we should all strive for.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being able to come and testify. My next question is for Tram. Are you still here?
Hi, yes, I'm still there.
Hi, hi, hi. It's good to see you. So my question for you was, what will happen if we continue our approach of addressing the Philly's housing crisis by building mostly market-rate housing without policies like rent control?
Yeah, I think the potential harm is that when we pay attention only to what we build and not who we build for, we end up housing people where the need is not as desperate, right? Supply is not just, we don't look at supply across one massive market. We have to look at submarkets, right? Neighborhoods can be submarkets. Different levels of income can be submarkets. And so when folks are designing supply solutions, it's really important to match that supply with the submarket needs, right? So it doesn't mean just building any unit. It means building units where there is more cost burden, building units where there is higher, I'm sorry, building units where there's a lower vacancy rate so that we can start to decrease the pressure, not just citywide, right, but specifically submarket-wide. And this kind of parallels how we look at rent increases. So for example, in Minnesota, there is a report done that looked at rent increases across the region, and it said, what they found was that, you know, annual rent increases weren't that bad. There was, you know, below four percent in the past twenty years. But then when they disaggregated by income, they actually found that the lowest quartile of income earners were experiencing the highest rents, right? Not the three, four, but actually the eleven, twelve percent. And so this disaggregation and this ability to look beyond, you know, broad general numbers and really focus in on submarkets or subgroups of renters, that is really what gives us the best strategies when it comes to policy design. And so building without regard to those submarkets just means that we're building without intention about who benefits. And then what ends up happening is that the people who benefit are the ones that build the housing, right, and the ones who can afford it, which does not always match with who needs housing the most.
Thank you for that. So my next question is, are housing owners still able to profit under the many rent control policies that have been enacted around the country?
Yeah, that is a common question, and yes, they are, right? That is the reason that it exists still in over a hundred and eighty jurisdictions. It's the reason that rent stabilization or rent control policies are being passed and improved to this day. The secret is really in designing a policy that matches the local housing conditions, right? So like Rashida said earlier, the history of rent increases in Philadelphia showed that average rent increases were, you know, around, I think she said, three-point-three percent, no greater than three-point-three percent. And so designing a cap that is, you know, around that number would make most sense because that is where most people were operating. Most property owners were already operating freely with, even without rent stabilization. When we look at percentage increases, it's also really important to do actual math, right? I think a lot of times in our heads, we think, you know, oh, two, three percent, that sounds like a really small number. But when we apply that to big rents, which, high rents, which is what people are paying, it can actually add up. So one example is just a theoretical, right? We have an apartment building with twenty units. Rents are set at fifteen hundred a month. If there is a theoretical three percent rent cap, rents would grow forty-five per unit per month. And across twenty units across twelve months, that would result in an increased annual rental income of over ten thousand dollars for the building. And so when we apply those, you know, the percentages that can feel small, it's really important to actually do that math and figure out what those look like. It's also important to consider, you know, the proportionality of what makes up the rental payment, right? We think about mortgage, we think about property taxes, utilities, all these things that come in. But a ten percent increase in, say, property tax doesn't equate to a need to increase the rent by ten percent. There's that proportionality of, you know, if the property tax only makes up twenty percent of the rent, then you only need to increase it by that proportion in order to make up that payment. So really important to, you know, do the math, get an Excel sheet when we can to figure out the, like Sarah spoke to, the financials of it. Because when we do look at the numbers, it does work.
Thank you so very much for your time. My next question is for Oskana. Who benefits from rent control policies enacted in other places? And which Philadelphians do you think will benefit the most from rent control?
Yeah, absolutely. So rent control generally in the U.S., but also in other countries as well, is not income-tested in the same way that like public housing or Section Eight are. So at its surface level, everyone who is a renter benefits who's living in a rent-stabilized unit. And arguably, people who are not living in rent-stabilized units benefit as well because there's less speculation overall in the rental market. So you don't see crazy rent hikes all across the board. But if you take a look at the impact of rent stabilization over the course of a long period of time, as we have been able to do in New York, we have had some form of rent control on the books since nineteen twenty. Our most recent law goes back to nineteen seventy-four, and we were able to improve upon it in twenty nineteen by getting rid of a bunch of loopholes that existed in it after years and years of organizing among tenants in the state. We find that low-income people and people of color benefit the most because of both discrimination within the rental market and because low-income people generally have less ability to get into whatever unit they want because they have less money. Those groups of people benefit the most because they just have less options than someone with more money who is able to pay the rent increase and is therefore not, doesn't face the same type of dire circumstances when the rent goes up by, let's say, a hundred or two hundred dollars.
Thank you so much for that, Madam Chair. That ends my questions.
Thank you, and I want to tell you, you're not an extremist, Councilmember Brooks. You're fighting for the basics. Thanks so much. I have a question for Tram. Tram, can you talk more about how rent control is similar to programs that we use frequently, like subsidized mortgages for homeowners or the minimum wage?
Yeah, of course. So when I think about tenant protections, I consider them as consumer protections, right? And that kind of broadens our ability to think about what tenants, what tenant rights should be in place. For example, we think about homeowners or any property owner, right? They are locked into a fixed-interest-rate mortgage, which allows, for example, myself, as a homeowner, I know what my mortgage payment is going to be every month for the next thirty years, which is a bit scary, but it's also incredibly safe and means that I can plan for my future. And that is a privilege, frankly, that tenants do not get, right? And all rent stabilization policies across the country that exist are not actually freezing rents, right? Like, my mortgage is practically frozen for thirty years. All rent stabilization policies are seeking to do is add some predictability to the formula. So rather than saying, you know, rent's going to be X amount every year, it's X plus a certain percent, and that allows just a safety net, a weight off of folks' shoulders when they think about the next week, the next month, the next year. Other policies that we can draw parallels to, like what I mentioned with payday lending, right? We have capped payday lending interest rates because we know that they're predatory and that they do not benefit the people who need them most. And so we have managed to, some states have managed to restrict interest rates, and that is a way to prevent predatory and egregious activity and protect consumers. And then the other parallel I'll make is to labor, right? Minimum wage is to labor as rent stabilization is to housing. Even if everyone has a job, they still need basic protections. Even if everyone has a home, right? If we live in this ideal world where there's enough supply for each person to have a home, we still need basic protections to ensure that they cannot be priced out of their home, cannot be no-costs evicted, and all of the, many of the policies that Philadelphia frankly has already passed. And so those are some of the ways that we can think about consumer protections, and then broadening that definition of consumer to include tenants, which make up just a huge proportion of our population.
Thank you so much for that. Senator Dillon, did you want to comment?
I did, Madam Chairman. Thank you so much. Again, I'd just like to make like a clarifying statement here in terms of the legislation that's being proposed. You know, my legislation here isn't about, you know, punishing landlords, you know? It's about creating a fair, right, and reasonable rental market. You know, why I'm only really kind of focused on landlords who are fifteen units plus, you know, because the bigger landlords are the ones who set the market rate for rentals. You know, if the majority of places available are restricted like this, then smaller landlords go in line and remain competitive in the marketplace. We also don't want to, you know, not to stereotype here, you know, we don't want like our little old renter lady to have a spare room just to jump through bureaucratic hoops here, you know? This legislation that I'm passing is about reining in the corporate landlords who are making a living off of rent checks. You know, it's not about punishing the people who want to buy an investment property or two and make a few extra dollars for their families and stuff, you know? Perfectly fine with that. So when it comes to the bigger picture of things here, you know, housing needs to have that steady pricing. You know, it's not like a luxury for some of these people. It's essential for the people, and especially in Philadelphia. You know, this is a check against landlord passing off cost to the renter while retaining all the profit. You know, renters can't be the only one exposed to risk in our housing market. But, you know, I do want to still advocate for people investing in our city. You know, I still want to turn around and bring in better jobs and stuff. And again, you know, everything kind of ties into one another through stuff here. And I see my councilmember Curtis Jones here eyeing me up when I'm talking here, and I get a little nervous when somebody of his wisdom and stuff is coming on camera when I'm talking. So if I seem a little shaken up through things. But I appreciate you giving me the platform to talk how we at the state are planning on collaborating with the city here. And at the end of the day, you know, the opportunity to just clarify things from a standpoint of what exactly it is I'm trying to get done here to protect us down here in Philadelphia. Thank you again.
Thank you for making that point and for drawing that out about why you set the limit at fifteen units or more. That makes a ton of sense. And I think the Majority Leader was coming on screen to show respect. But did you want to, Majority Leader, do you have a comment?
You are absolutely right, Madam Chair. I just wanted to show the respect that this is a thoughtful piece of legislation and that if you heard my remarks earlier, I commented about the small investor, the postman, the schoolteacher that uses this as a retirement to supplement their retirement and how this would impact. And that clarification was important, and so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scherls, will you call the next panel to testify?
Dennis Scott, Sheri Thomas, Cynthia Duttwin, Sam Stein.
Dennis Scott, are you there and connected? Tech Support, do we know where this panelist is?
Was it for Dennis Scott?
Yes. Do we have Dennis Scott on?
We currently do not, no.
Okay. Sheri Thomas, are you there and connected?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Please say your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheri Thomas. I'm the Director of Housing at the Legal Clinic for the Disabled. The Legal Clinic for the Disabled is a direct services legal agency. We provide representation for low-income individuals who live with physical and mental health disabilities. And we have also been a longtime partner in the Philadelphia Eviction Prevention Project. I myself have been working with the PEP program since its inception, and I appreciate the time that this committee is taking to hear about what we're seeing as advocates on the ground with our client populations. As I move forward in my testimony today, I want to, I want city council members to remember one number that I'll be repeating throughout my testimony, and that number is nine-hundred-and-fourteen. Nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, that is the monthly SSI benefit for 2023. People who receive SSI have disabilities that deem them unable to work, and they've also been deemed by the Social Security Administration to be in extreme financial need. In 2021, roughly ninety-seven thousand Philadelphians received SSI, and of those ninety-seven thousand, eighty-five percent are over the age of eighteen and likely reliant on SSI as their sole income source. Remember, that number is nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars a month. The average rent, if you compare that right now, for a studio apartment in Philadelphia is currently over a thousand dollars. For one-bedrooms ranges anywhere from twelve-hundred to sixteen-hundred dollars. Now, that's a studio in one bedroom. If you're talking about people who have disabilities and who are on SSI with families, they are certainly priced out of those units. Remember, nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. To pay for a studio apartment in Philadelphia, it is highly likely that someone on SSI will have to use almost one-hundred percent of their income for rent if they do not have subsidy. And subsidies are hard to come by. This year, nearly thirty-seven thousand Philadelphians applied for housing choice vouchers with Philadelphia Housing Authority. Of the thirty-seven thousand, only ten thousand will get a spot. Nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars is the only income that is received by the following LCD clients, whose stories I'd like to share with you. Both of these tenants are elderly and disabled. One is on a month-to-month lease. He has received rent increase notices from his landlord every couple of months, which is completely legal without rent control, as we heard. Because he cannot afford to move, he continually pays the increased amounts, which has caused him severe financial hardship. And pretty soon, if the increases go the way they are going, this senior disabled man will no longer be able to live in his apartment. Another LCD client who's living with her daughter and granddaughter recently received a notice for a three-hundred-dollar increase. Again, that's a three-hundred-dollar increase where her sole income is nine-hundred-and-fourteen, forty-one dollars. And she can no longer afford it, and her family, her granddaughter and daughter are currently looking for shelter placements. These stories are typical of LCD clients, and this is especially challenging. We heard testimony today of renters who can no longer afford where they're living and decide that the affordable thing to do would be to move. and, um, decide that the affordable thing to do would be to move and sometimes outside of the city. Um, for tenants who are living with multiple disabilities and need access to quality healthcare, this is not an easy thing to do, um, and nor is it advisable. Um, we can see that rising rents can affect, you know, um, health outcomes in that way. If you have a doctor, if you have a care team, um, that you are seeing in your neighborhood, that accessibility is really important. So it is not as simple as getting up and moving to someplace more affordable. Um, in two thousand nineteen, this city council and members of this committee supported and passed the Good Cause Ordinance. Um, this law was passed in order to protect tenants from being displaced as property values increased in, um, neighborhoods across the city. However, without rent control, as we had heard from previous panelists, it is likely to lose its impact. Under Good Cause, a landlord may evict if a renter is habitually, um, late or does not pay their rent. But because right now rent increases can happen at any time, um, for any amount and for any reason, um, even one sharp increase in rent can cause a tenant to miss or stop payments, um, which then provides landlords with perfectly legal reason, uh, to dispossess low-income renters from desirable properties and neighborhoods. Um, the absence of rent control affects all renters, especially those living on fixed incomes. They're most at risk of homelessness. When you are receiving disability benefits and specifically SSI, there are limits on how much you can work. You're deemed as, um, unable to work or that is very difficult for you to work. Um, there is a small allowance, um, to supplement that income. However, that allowance comes with its own limits. Um, if you go over those limits, then your SSI gets cut off. Um, and as we heard from Rashida earlier, even if someone were to work a full-time job, they would need to work three-point-four full-time jobs, uh, to be able to, to afford their rent. Um, the other limitation with, um, disability and SSI specifically is that there is an asset limit for how much money you can keep, um, in the bank. Um, so that asset limit right now for one person is two thousand dollars. Um, and for a city like Philadelphia, where it is common for landlords to ask for first month, last month, and security deposit before approving a move-in, um, it is extremely challenging for someone, um, on this type of income, this type of fixed income, to even save up that money to be able to move even to a more affordable unit. Um, so while I am here, um, advocating for those who, um, have disabilities and chronic conditions and are on these fixed incomes, I'm sure this panel or this committee recognizes that, um, you know, twenty-three percent of Philadelphians are living in poverty. And this is not just, um, something that impacts those with disabilities, but it is something that shows up, um, acutely in those communities. Um, and LCD really appreciates this committee's, um, initiative and bringing this issue to the forefront. Every day we are seeing our clients get priced out of this market and have nowhere to go. And we look forward to working with city council on equitable solutions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for your work. Um, Cynthia Duttwin, are you there and connected?
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for having me. My name is Cynthia Duttwin. Um, and I want to just begin, um, by telling you I currently live and am part of a tenant council in an apartment complex in West Mount Airy. And I'm speaking today to advocate for rent stabilization in our city. Um, the particular owner and management office that I rent from has often been in the news for unlawful evictions and currently has been in the news for the building where the wall had collapsed, displacing a tremendous number of tenants in Philadelphia. Um, I want to start with some quotes from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three from the owner and his office management staff when tenants decided to fight back on the unacceptable conditions of our building and exploitive rent practices. Quote, "We are thankful to the tenants who recommended possible designation with the Historical Commission. Please anticipate your rental rates increasing substantially." Quote two, "It has come to our attention that you are unhappy with the conditions and management of, um, uh, I'm not going to name the exact apartment complex, um, but my apartment complex. You can terminate your occupancy in fifteen days and move from the complex in forty-five days. If you accept this offer and leave in good standing, you are free to leave without liability or further obligations. This is a one-time offer that will expire eight, twenty-twenty-two." Quote three, "Thank you for the notice. You intend to put your money in escrow. Please sign attached agreement, landlord and tenant, to set up joint escrow, um, account. And once license and inspection marks violations complied, landlord will be entitled to the rent," end quotes. Um, this landlord has not had a rental license since February of twenty-twenty-two, continues to not have a rental license. So this landlord is not allowed to collect rent at this time. He continues to charge late fees, although he can not, cannot charge late fees, um, when he has no rental license. And, um, the rent is legally placed in escrow, which it is. Um, there is still no lead certificate stating our building, um, is let safe, although the building was tested, um, as one of our tenant escrow demands in December. There has never been any lead certificates given to tenants to show the building and the units are let safe since our area was phased in mandating this by law in October of twenty-twenty-one. There were around fifty violations, Ellen and I noted in a report back in the summer. Sewage flooded our basement where the laundry room was. We were barricaded via the front doors due to very slow construction on the front of the building and only had one exit on the side door, um, of the building and two, uh, two of the, and the fire escapes. Two of the doors to the fire escapes were boarded shut. Threats for walkthroughs for tenants who had heaters, um, uh, were, were made. Um, the building and many units had no heat for days at a time.
Uh, I see a comment or response from Ms. Duttwin and, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Madam Chair, Garcia. If you could make the connection, I would greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks for chiming in with that. And between, um, my staff and Councilmember Brooks, we'll make sure you get the contact info. Thank you. I think I see that Dennis Scott is on. Are you there and connected? Dennis Scott, I see you on the screen. Can you hear me? Okay. Um, Sam Stein, are you there and connected?
Yes, I am.
Can you, uh, please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Samuel Stein. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to offer comments at this hearing today. Um, like Oksana Miranova, who spoke before me, I'm a Senior Policy Analyst at the Community Service Society of New York, which is a nonprofit organization that promotes economic opportunity for New Yorkers. Uh, for the last century, CSS has supported rent control and fought for the strongest protections possible for tenants. We've heard today about many different ways that rent regulation can positively affect the lives of tenants and the life of a city. The most basic are its ability to keep housing costs from spiraling out of control and to provide a bedrock of stability for those who do not own their homes. But I want to use my time here today to consider two additional important benefits of rent regulation policy. First, last summer, we at the Community Service Society surveyed low-income New Yorkers to see if their rent went up last year, and if so, whether landlords had made any improvements to their apartment or their buildings. We found that rent-regulated tenants who experienced rent, a rent increase were twelve percentage points more likely to see improvements in their buildings compared to unregulated tenants. So according to our survey data, rent-stabilized landlords seem to be more likely to invest in improvements than market-rate landlords. Why is this? In the New York system, making an improvement to a building or an apartment is one of the few ways a landlord can raise rents beyond the adjustment set annually by the city's Rent Guidelines Board. Market-rate landlords, on the other hand, can simply raise rents based on market signals, regardless of whether their buildings are rising or falling in quality. So rent regulation can be an incentive for landlords to invest in their building rather than the opposite, as opponents often claim. The second point I'd like to make, um, is about who has opportunities to purchase homes in a city with rent stabilization. In a speculative and unregulated real estate market, buildings are bought and sold less for the prices, less for prices grounded in the revenue they currently generate and more for prices based on the revenues the purchaser expects they can extract from a building. Investors will therefore pay much more for buildings than the rent rolls would seem to justify under the assumption that they can significantly raise the building's profit levels by raising rents or diminishing labor and maintenance costs, or sometimes both. With rent regulation in place, however, building values are based more on the actual income and expenses of rental buildings than the theoretical rents or resale values the building could conjure if the new buyer could raise rents to any level they like. This keeps buildings and land prices from escalating dramatically, making purchase prices more reasonable for those long excluded from homeownership, and creating more opportunities for public authorities, nonprofits, community development corporations, community land trusts, and tenants themselves to buy buildings and convert them into permanently affordable housing models. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate, uh, rent regulation can be an incentive to increase investment in buildings, whereas in a market-rate system, landlords can just raise the rent without investing in their buildings. And, uh, rent regulation can help keep sale prices more in line with rents uh, and therefore make homeownership possible, uh, for the tenants of the buildings themselves as well as for nonprofits and others who intend to keep, uh, apartments affordable in perpetuity. Thank you very much, uh, for the chance to speak.
Thank you so much for that critical testimony. Um, Councilmember Brooks, do you have questions for this panel?
Yes, I do. Um, for Sherri Thomas, what happens when someone on a disability is forced into a shelter um, because of skyrocketing rents?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Councilmember, and I appreciate that. Um, it, it really depends on the disability. Um, but what we've found is that our shelters are not really fully equipped to take some of our clients. Um, and so the answer to that question is, um, you know, tenants with disabilities may have to double up with family members, um, rely on, um, hotels. Um, we have seen, um, a number of our clients, um, go to extended stays um, and can barely afford that. Um, and it, it's, it's really a grave situation, um, because the shelter systems are already at capacity. Um, and then once you add someone who has a disability, uh, and they, you know, they may be far from their care team, um, and their healthcare access. Um, so it, it severely impacts, um, people's health outcomes. Um, and then we just find that we, we continue to have a growing, uh, chronically ill population.
Yes, I wanted to hear it from you because I've seen firsthand, um, what happens when someone with disability and their families are displaced and, you know, the system isn't designed to accommodate them in, in any capacity. So thank you for sharing that. Um, my next question is for Cynthia Dutton. What impact did all of the tenants, what, what did, what impacted all the threats of eviction and rent increases have on you?
On me personally?
Yes.
Um, okay, Councilwoman, I put my money in escrow in August of twenty-twenty-two. Um, but there were other tenants, not all tenants, that joined me in that. Many tenants were, um, very nervous about putting their money in escrow due to retaliation. Um, the other thing that triggered, um, retaliatory letters was that multiple reports went out to LNI, not just from the tenants, but from homeowners that surrounded this apartment complex with, um, mass concern over the building. And Ellen I came out and did multiple checks on the building. And there were, I, I want to say fifty-one total violations on the building. Um, and he has no rental license. Um, so I think what triggered, um, the retaliation was the LNI reports and then, um, cer- certain tenants putting their money into escrow.
So if your landlord was not able to raise your rent to any price that he wanted or evict you without cause, would you have felt safer fighting him for the problems in your apartment?
Um, yes, because one of the things that we really feel that he is going to do further in retaliation because he had to then move forward and make the repairs that were long needed, that he had been responsible for. Um, he's threatened to increase our rent substantially for multiple, for, for, before. He increased our rent in the summer, two hundred dollars. Um, and, and I can tell you right now, um, I believe it was because he couldn't get a rental license. Um, a neighbor had heard from her window, either property management or the owner, speaking to somebody from the city, um, saying he was going to make repairs on the front of the building and he was going to do it ASAP. And the very next day, we got notified that our rent would be increasing two hundred dollars. Um, and once that happened, um, concerns started to go out. Ellen I reports were going out, um, and, um, you know, he said, um, in the increase, if we didn't sign the lease and agree to the increase, and this all happened in the summer of twenty-twenty-two, he would then, if we didn't sign the lease by October, he would then increase our rent to three fifty. If we haven't signed it by, um, and if we still haven't signed it, it would go to market value, which he, um, stated was between two and three thousand dollars. So, um, our rent was drastically increased by two hundred dollars. And now, um, he's already threatening, the building got designated with the Historical Commission as a protected building. Um, and, and once that happened, he sent out a letter to everyone that due to this honor, our rent will be increased substantially. There's always this threat that he makes of our rent increasing substantially. And because he is working on the building repairs right now, um, still doesn't have a rental license, so I'm assuming even more repairs need to be made. I know that, um, that down the pipe, the tenants are going to wind up suffering the cost of this.
So just for clarity, um, Cynthia, that is two hundred dollars per month and it is three hundred dollars per month. Am I correct?
It's two hundred dollars he increased per month back in June, when, when your lease re-began, okay? Um, and then if people didn't sign that agreement by October of twenty-twenty-two, they automatically would get an increase of three hundred and fifty dollars. And if they still didn't sign their lease, even if it was way before their lease was up, okay? They would automatically get their rent increased to market value, which would be between two thousand and three thousand dollars. So you were forced to sign a lease, um, in June, or your rent was going to get, get even more increase past the two hundred dollars. So it felt, um, very threatening. It felt very ominous. And, um, people, somebody had mentioned to move its first month's rent, last month's rent, and deposit. And we're civil servant workers. I myself, um, you know, uh, work for an organization that, um, manages Medicaid dollars for behavioral and mental, um, health individual that need mental health, um, services in the city. I mean, our paychecks are middle-class paychecks, um, you know? And a lot of us don't have that kind of money to just pick up and move when a landlord increases rent. And then you're at risk for other landlords just doing the same thing. So what would even be, why would you even bother to move when all, when other landlords in the city are doing the same?
Thank you so much for, uh, your comments.
Sure.
I think I have questions for Sam Stein.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. So how are tenants and communities benefited, um, when the tenants can more easily organize?
Right. So tenants, uh, have a much stronger capacity to organize under a system of rent stabilization than without it. Why that is, is rent stabilization, um, like my colleague Oksana says, sets up a, a framework between the tenant and the landlord. Um, and says that the landlord can't simply evict the tenants for, you know, calling on their landlord collectively to do what needs to be done. Uh, just like in the building we were hearing about right before me. Um, without rent control, landlords can find fairly easy ways to do retaliatory evictions. With them, they cannot. Um, so tenants have the confidence. So tenants have the confidence that they can knock on each other's doors, form those tenant associations, and act collectively, and know exactly what their rights are. They can also speak out politically on behalf of tenants in general. And before I was talking about investment in buildings as a result of the mechanism that allows landlords to raise rents when they invest in buildings. That's true, but I, I neglected to say the other reason why there might be more investment in rent stabilized buildings is because tenants in them can organize and demand those improvements without fear that the landlord's going to arbitrarily evict them or raise their rent as a result. So rent stabilized landlords in some ways just have to be more responsive to their tenants because they don't have the option of simply ending the lease of so-called troublemakers.
Thank you for that. My other question is, how can rent control make owning a home possible for Philadelphians?
Yeah, my argument is that rent regulation means that home prices, home sale prices don't escalate to really, really high levels based on fictional rents, based on the rent somebody thinks that they could get for an apartment. It stays pretty close to a multiple of what the rent actually is and what it costs to operate the housing. That keeps the speculators from, you know, choosing to target that particular type of housing. And it keeps the home prices more in line with the actual cost. That makes it more possible for tenants to purchase. There are cities in the United States that have tenant opportunity to purchase acts, where when a building goes for sale, the tenants have the first right of refusal. Washington DC has had this for forty years. I think that's a great policy, and I think it works a lot better when there's something like rent control in place to keep the, the sale price from being, you know, what someone would buy it for if their expectation is that they could double all the rents.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stein, I appreciate your time. Councilmember Gotti, I think that's the end to my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Sorry, did, did you have something, Councilmember Brooks?
Dennis Scott ever get on?
I think he's on, but just having trouble muting or unmuting. Dennis, I think it's star six to unmute. I think. Or is somebody on from tech support that can help?
Yes, we gave out instructions. We tried calling out to the participant, but we're getting, it goes straight into voicemail.
I think he's on, he just can't unmute.
Yeah, it would be if he's on his cell phone, star six. Or from the top corner of the team's application, he could click on the microphone, so. He's not sure if he could hear me.
Mr. Scott? Okay, maybe we could try, maybe we could try calling him for a public comment. Okay. Councilmember Brooks, are you able to take over for a little bit?
Yes, I am, I'm prepared.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alrighty. Alrighty. So that concludes the panel testimony for this resolution. Ms. Shields, do you have anyone registered to provide public comment?
Yes, several people, councilmember.
Okay, we will now take a brief break to connect those individuals who have registered to provide public comment to the hearing. Due to the volume of those registered for public comment, we will limit the remarks to two minutes. Ms. Shields, would you please read the name of the first person registered for public comment?
I'll be happy to do that as soon as council support has them connected. Thank you.
Adam Chair, we're going to try to connect Dennis Scott before going to public comment. I did reach out to him and I'm going to try to connect via conference line.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Hello, is this Mr. Scott?
It is.
Oh, thank you. Can you state your name and then proceed with testimony, please?
Oh, all right. My name is William Dennis Scott, I go by Dennis. And I'm glad I was able to get in. My rent is supposed to increase one hundred and sixty dollars beginning June the first. And last year, it went up only ten dollars because my apartment is one of the old apartments. It had, it has the older appliances, the old metal cabinets with the rust look and all that good stuff, and had no renovation been done to it. And I think they charged me a hundred and sixty dollars starting, extra, starting June the first, without any renovation being done. And I don't know how they can do that when they only charged me ten last, last year and nothing was done. And it's almost getting me to the point where I'm ready to move out of Philadelphia. I like the neighborhood I'm in, but some of the problems I'm having with, in my apartment, is, like I said, I had old appliances with chips in them, you know, and they look like they tried to paint it over them. I have a door that leads to the balcony that's got a half an inch gap in it. They came and put metal strip, wood strippings on the inside, but the draft is still there, heat in the summer, cold in the winter. And I got a moldy bathroom, and it was mold all around the edges of it. They came and put wood strippings where you, they tried to hide the mold and, and painted the wood white, but you can still see the mold. And it's hazardous, I think, to, to, to my breathing. And they closed the, the back parking lot behind the building because of some kind of structural damage, that was like two years ago. And they haven't done anything to it. And they've been torn cars for the last few months because they don't want you to park on the side of the building. But the people that work here, they park on the side of the building, they park in the drive where delivery or handicap can't get to the sidewalk in the front of the rental office. But the worker parks there all day, every day. You got no heat most of the time, but now it, it's, it's kind of a warm day and the heat on, you got to open the windows because the valves on the radiator don't work. So you either hot, or you got no heat, and you cold. So that's some of the problems that I'm having. And they're talking about fining you for not putting trash in the trash can or something. I don't know what that really means, a hundred dollars. But the steps out the side of my building at the bottom is full of trash. It's been that way since I moved here. And maintenance, nobody has not cleaned it. They don't, they don't have adequate maintenance, I think, I don't think, because my sink was leaking downstairs to my neighbor below. And that's really the only time when they come in here, is when my neighbor below complains of water leak or something like that. And it was the electrician that changed the faucet. And they put in a faucet that really doesn't fit. I got like two holes with a hot and cold water, where they, that's not being used, they put some kind of plugs in them. And this faucet looks like it's the one deal thing that goes in a new renovated apartment. And it's got putty around it to keep it from leaking. The, the hallways are not being cleaned because they, I don't know what happened to the maintenance people, but I haven't seen them in months. And the pool, the little pool that was here when I first moved in almost eight years ago was one of the attractions. It hasn't been open. The trash, the people that collect the trash, they are constantly changing, I guess because they don't pay them. And the management lives in Florida, and they sent a guy up to manage. And they kind of found out he was spending the money not paying anybody, so management is not that great. And it's been at least four managers here since I've been here. I put in a lot of complaints to move since my first year because the apartment hasn't been right. And other maintenance complaints, and they were ignored, and then finally, they just disappeared. We went to a meeting, we were having a meeting with the managers before. And the guy said, oh yeah, your maintenance complaints have been erased. So they, they just, like shoved me to the side, ignored me, and just deleted my request. It's really hard. I love this community. I'm not ready to move back down North Carolina. I have a little piece of land that I can put a double-wide trailer on. I don't want to do that. But with the prices going up to where they are, they, it's like they are pushing out people of color and people that do not have high wages that they're earning. I'm retired. And I, I don't think in another couple of years, if it keeps going like it is, that I'll be able to stay up here. And you see all these buildings being built in my area and a little piece of land, they're going straight up. And I think they're really going to try, I think they're running people out. Like, my area is one of the most diverse communities in the country. And I don't think in a few more years, it's going to be that way.
Thank you so much. Due to the volume of those registered for public comment, we will limit the remarks for two, two minutes. Ms. Shield, will you please read the name of the first person registered for public comment?
Kevin Matheson.
Hello, Mr. Matheson, are you online?
The participant is not online.
Okay, the next is, Ms. Shields, you could read the next one.
Carrie Knott. Hello, this is Carrie Nelson.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, can you please state your name for the record and proceed?
My name is Carrie Nelson. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking today. I'll try to be very brief. I am a housing provider and I have been for many years, and it has been overwhelmingly great experience. When thinking about the concept of limiting rents and rent increases in the city of Philadelphia, one of the things that we know is that of the hundred top cities in the country, Philadelphia has some of the lowest housing costs. It's number seventy-three on the list of a hundred. And in terms of how much housing costs have increased over the course of last year, it's even further down the list. It's almost at the very bottom, it's number seventy, number ninety-two. We also know that even though Philadelphia is the poorest large city, something we hear constantly, that housing costs, even relative to incomes of folks in the city, are not, are not terribly out of line with what's affordable since according to the interactive map done by the National Low Income Housing Coalition, there are at least sixteen zip codes in the city of Philadelphia where something around seventeen dollars an hour would allow somebody to rent an apartment and not exceed thirty percent of their income. And Glassdoor tells us that someone working at an Amazon warehouse, for example, makes about that amount. So even somebody without a college education, extra degrees, training, you know, member of the union finds it affordable if they search here in the city of Philadelphia. But what we do know is that people have seen a large increase and their budgets are really strange. We understand that. But of all the variables that they might look at to think are the ones that are squeezing them, it's not going to be housing that comes out at the top. On the other hand, in my humble opinion, it's the number on the other side. It's that income. We know that we don't support our people in attaining incomes that would help them to achieve what they want to achieve in life. And in terms of landlords or housing providers, one thing that I would request of city council is that city council help us to be better landlords. Right now, I can't find any place in the city where I can go to see what all the laws are and requirements are for me to be following. I don't know whether I'm in step or whether I'm out of step. I don't know whether I'm doing well or I'm doing terribly. So we really need some support and some helpful interaction with the city in order to, to do our jobs best. And for the folks who are here being residents, for them to succeed, they need some help as well on that income side of the equation. I thank you very much for the time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nelson, for the suggestion. Ms. Shields, can you read the next person?
Pauline Rosenberg.
Ms. Rosenberg, are you available?
Can you hear me?
Are you Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Okay, can you state your name for testimony and proceed?
Yes, my name is Pauline Rosenberg. Is that all you need?
And proceed with your testimony?
Yes, thank you. So I am a retiree, I own a couple of girl houses, I bought them, you know, when I was younger in order to be able to supplement social security. And I rely on them for income. Now, the issue of rent control is that it, it, it creates unintended consequences. And, and the council has run into this before. The one thing, if I am told to do a rent that is not, you know, reasonable for me, the upshot of that is I will sell the house. And I'll go elsewhere. And I suspect that that will be true for a lot of people. They will sell their houses, they will invest elsewhere. I can't start to lose income, I mean, I barely make it with the, the houses that I have in social security. So the unintended consequence there is that the number of renters in the city will decrease. And this has happened nationally. One of the unintended consequences is people get out of market, housing providers leave, new ones jump in because they're not going to make money on their investments. And there's another unintended consequences. A couple of years ago, I renovated two of my houses. I put in new kitchens, new bathrooms, new amenities. Each house cost me about fifty thousand dollars to do. I had refinanced, you know, the mortgages so that I have equity to work with. But even with that, it's going to take me four to five years to recoup my investments. If there was rent control, there's no way I would have done that. I couldn't have afforded to do that because I wouldn't be getting the money back on my investment. In both houses, the rent went up substantially. They have to, they were like practically new houses. That would not happen in rent control. And that's one of the unintended consequences that has happened nationally. People don't renovate, they don't make capital improvements, and then you get blight, you know? So the one other thing that I do, and I want to reiterate what the, the young lady said about, you know, not knowing what's all right and not all right, I'll just give you a very quick example. During the pandemic, one of my tenants stopped paying rent. This was not a person that was thrown out of work. He just stopped paying rent because he could get away with it, and there was no repercussion because there was an eviction moratorium. I, I went to Pauline's court because I wanted to, you know, get the, the rent from him. And I was told, apparently his wife had left him, and so now he was in the house by himself, and I was required. And so now he was in the house by himself. And I was required, which I didn't know, uh, to get a new, uh, rental suitability license. So what they told me is that in small claims court, you know what? Since his wife left and you didn't get a new rental security, uh, suitability license, you can't go to court. They're going to throw, they're going to throw.
Ms. Rosenberg, you're, you're at a little pa, you're past two minutes.
Okay, I'm finishing one sentence. I'm going to have five thousand dollars because I didn't have a piece of paper and this scamper got away with it. That's an unintended consequence. And, and who benefits by that? Certainly not me. And he gets away with it. So thank you for my time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rosenberg. Ms. Shields, can you read the next person signed up for testimony?
Meyer De Data.
Not present, Madam Chair.
Can you?
Jerry De Pietro.
Mr. De Pietro, are you available?
No, no, not present. Um, the next participant is going to be Stanley Daniel.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel, can you state your name for the record and proceed with your comment?
Yes, my name is Stanley Daniel. I'm a licensed P A N New Jersey Realtor. I'm a investor, a property manager. I've probably had, uh, six hundred tenants in the last fifteen years or so. I'm not going to talk to you about the insanity of uh, rent control, everybody else's. I'm going to mention other things that the city has done that sticks their hands in my pocket and the pocket of the other, of the other landlords.
Mr. Daniel, this co, Mr. Daniel, this is for rent control. That's what this testimony and comment is related to rent control. You said you're not speaking about that.
No, I'm, no, I'm speaking about how city council has affected landlords, which, which affects the rent that tenants pay and the good condition of the units that they, uh, that they rent. For, for example, okay, I have an expense for having a, a lead safe place for a property that doesn't have any children under seven. That's a, a law the city council passed that affects rents in the city of Philadelphia. Things of that sort. Incidentally, PHA is not held to the same standard as, as I am. Why? Okay, you offer a free attorney to the tenants, that's fine. Why am I not offered a free, uh, attorney? So I have to pay two, three, four hundred dollars extra every time I have an eviction. All the things that city council has done has raised rents in the city of Philadelphia. And we still are like the seventy-eighth deepest large city. So instead of passing all kinds of silly, uh, legislation that affects the rents, you guys should really look at our side of the story before you make decisions that are negative to the tenants of the city. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Have a great day. Ms. Shields, can you read the next?
Victor Pinky Senior.
Victor is not present. Our next participant will be Mike Lynch.
Mr. Lynch, can you state your name for the record and proceed with your comment?
Hi, my name is Mike Lynch. Um, I also am a landlord and I thought it would be important to remind you of, uh, the landlords' contributions to the city. The landlord pays highest real estate taxes of anyone because, as I understand it, homeowners don't pay the same real estate tax, they get an exemption. Um, and we also pay income to the city. When I make my money, a good portion of it goes in terms of, uh, income tax to the city in the terms of the, the two or three different, uh, documents I have to fill out every year for that. Um, so landlords are important to the city and, uh, you're driving them away with, uh, making a situation untenable for landlords to exist by requiring the landlords to stop increasing their rent. But you're not increasing the income for the tenants to pay, you're not decreasing the cost for the landlords. My taxes, I'm one of, I own five buildings. One of them went from five thousand to seven thousand dollars this year after going up about five years ago as well. So they're continuing to grow up. And, uh, your goal is admirable. I recommend, you know, I recognize it's important to help, uh, poor people survive. And, uh, one of the ways you do it is with Section Eight, PHA. And, uh, you get that money from tax money from people who live in the city like landlords. And, uh, I think it's important to be able to provide that. Uh, I had a whole bunch of other things I wanted to say, but I'm running out of time so quickly.
Thank you, thank you so, Mr. Lynch, do you live in the city?
I do not. I live three blocks outside the city. I have five houses I rent in the city and I take care of them myself.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comment. I appreciate your time.
All right, bye-bye.
Ms. Shields, can you read the next?
Richard Moore.
I'm Richard Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Can you state your name for the record and proceed with your comment?
Yes, uh, my name is Richard Moore. Um, good, good afternoon, City Council Chair, Council Members. My name is Richard Moore. I am a Pennsylvania licensed real estate broker, property manager, and a Philadelphia housing provider who has been providing housing in our city for forty-three years. Before I go into my testimony, I want to comment on, uh, some of the testimonies this morning of tenants. Uh, and speaking about some of the horrible situations that they're living in. Uh, landlords without rental licenses, uh, conditions that the, of the tenants, of these tenants had to put up with. There are laws already against this. These tenants shouldn't be paying rent. And, uh, I just want to convey to you that landlords like myself who are properly licensed, who do properly run their businesses, you know, are kind of, uh, uh, put down because of a few bad apples. Anyway, I'm here today to speak not against or in favor of rent control. I'm sure you have heard a lot of testimony, both before and against the subject. What I'm here today to convey to you is to give you a, some insight as to what it's like to be a housing provider, especially over the last four years and how it has changed. From the bedbug ordinance that take, that places the responsibility of treatment on an owner to real estate taxes, and in some cases have increased as much as five hundred percent, to insurance rates that have tripled due to crime and increasing construction costs, to maintenance costs that have doubled, and finally to COVID, which has allowed tenants to stay in units without paying rent for as long as ten months. The affordable housing market in our industry is on the verge of collapse. Our seventy-three-year-old nonprofit landlords association's current membership is less than half of the membership that it was thirty years ago. Our industry has simply been overregulated and burdened with ordinances after ordinances, all of which are well-meaning, but are very hard to actually work with. Passing rent control measures at this time without carefully examining the facts, reviewing the other rent control laws in other cities, and coming up with a plan that is tailor-made for our great city, the only way such a law can be implemented. Council Chairperson, you have the ability to form a task force comprised of professionals from the real estate industry, legal experts, community leaders, tenant advocates, investors, and government officials, whose mission would be to come up with a list of suggestions to be forwarded to you for your consideration to implement in a Philadelphia rent control act that would make sense. If Philadelphia is going to have a rent control law, it should be a law that has that input from all who are impacted by such a law. Being an investment property owner in Philadelphia these days is not what tenant advocates think it is. It's not easy. It's, it's not an easy profession. A good owner-manager like myself is on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Most of my clients I manage are small mom-pa owners, like the immigrant Ukrainian couple who owned five houses they renovated themselves. The wife who brings delicious homemade cherry dumplings to her tenants during the holidays. To the single mother Philadelphia schoolteacher who owns three trioxanes that the income will be used to put her son through college. To the owners like myself, a single father raising two sons, one who became a highly decorated naval officer, one that, uh, is, is a, an affordable housing counselor by two younger sons. One went through a four-year opioid addiction battle.
Mr. Moore, you're almost at your time. Sorry to interrupt. Okay.
Uh, and now is sober. And, uh, my youngest son, who is a fifteen-year-old high school student with autism. We all are passionate and we all care about what we do. Railroading a rent control act right now into law will change all this. The personal interest, the hands-on approach to real estate investment of our city will change. The small landlord will no longer be able to peep. And you'll only have large corporations who number cr, numbers crunchers, like Ironstone Real Estate Partners stepping into the picture. Is this, is this what we all want? Is this what Philadelphia is all about? Right now, you have the ability to change this. All the individuals like myself ask for is you make this decision with caution.
Mr. Moore, we aren't making it, Mr. Moore, I don't mean to rush you, but you passed your testimony time and we're not making any decisions today. This is just an informational hearing to discuss rent control. There is no bill on the table at all. And I do appreciate all your suggestions. Um, and I would love to have a deeper conversation later on about some of the suggestions that you offered. I really appreciate your time.
And I thank you for your time and opportunity to be able to get testimony today and hope it can all work together to make the right decision.
Thank you. Ms. Shields, can you read the next person signed up for testimony, please?
Joan Preston.
I hope we can come, my name is Joan Preston. I hope we can come to a peaceful and righteous agreement, especially restoring landlord and tenant's relationship. That is paramount. If Philadelphia is going to prosper as a historical city that it has been credited for, you must stop encouraging helpless, the helpless mentality. Here recently, small landlords have been threatened with higher taxes, accused of not paying our BRTs and NPTs. Where is this coming from? Or does it matter? To add insult to injury, it appears that outside investors are encouraged to come into our city and granted certain perks. Small landlords are doing what is right. There is no wonder our city is crumbling. If you continue to encourage the mentality, you have the right to live rent-free. You're the government responsibility. They should take care of you. I say you are bringing our city to nothing and that is not right. You're driving people out of business and out of Philadelphia. What hurts is to observe some council person and some neighborhood organization who have government salaries taking care of them and their families, and yet you're capping landlords. Yet experts, small landlords, expect small landlords to maintain their properties, pay mortgages, utilities, tax and maintain our properties upkeep. Is there any wonder that too many of our communities are run down? How can it be different? Again, the small landlords are not in the business to price gouge tenants. Our concern is small landlords and stance of small landlords are suffering and have suffered because of certain sect of our city government believes that we are having no purpose and we must go away. Many of us have worked for years and did without to maintain our investments like, have, habitable. No small landlords are price gouging. During COVID, certain council persons were encouraging tenants not to pay rent. In fact, there were several parades where people were carrying signs disclosing, I want to live rent-free. This is not Philly and that is not who we are. Most small landlords have worked hard. During COVID, most of us were living off of social security and small pensions and some had none. While you thought it was a joke, I stand on that because you focus, your focus was primarily on tenants and the devil with landlords. While we were getting no rents, no evictions, and many of our properties were being destroyed. Even with that, we had the obligation to keep our properties in living condition or be reported to L and I. Far too many tenants were encouraged not to pay rent. To you, that was the thing to do. God bless you and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Preston. Ms. Shields, can you read the next person, please?
Deanna Ballinger.
Good afternoon, this is Deanna Ballinger. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Can you proceed with your testimony, please?
Sure. So I'm Deanna Ballinger. I'm the Senior Vice President and Group Manager with JLL. I'm here today in my capacity as the Chair of Building Owners and Managers Association of Philadelphia, commonly referred to as BOMA. Given the limited time today, I've taken the liberty of condensing our submitted testimony. BOMA members typically operate in the commercial office, industrial and retail and real estate sectors rather than in multifamily and or residential. As private sector owners and managers of real estate, however, the issue of rent control raises some serious concerns for our members and our organization. The notion of fixing an individual's rent or housing cost may be rooted in good intentions. As a strategy, however, rent control does not occur in isolation. It has consequences both positive and negative. In a multifamily asset, rent or revenue from our perspective is only one component of the overall investment. Setting the revenue component at a particular rate without the ability to stabilize the expense side of the equation, i.e. the real estate taxes, interest rates, utilities and other regulatory burdens, you then enter the land of unintended consequences. Let's turn the table for a moment. Imagine in this very high inflationary and rising interest rate environment, the city of Philadelphia was told it could no longer raise taxes. What would you do to make the ends meet? You could start scaling back on services to citizens. You could stop investing in new city vehicles, police cars, trash trucks, et cetera. You could eliminate pre-k or after-school sports. You could close rec centers and libraries or defer maintenance on city assets or terminate employees. Now let me be clear. I would not recommend actually doing any of these things. I am, however, attempting to illustrate the problem of turning to rent control alone as the strategy for achieving an adequate supply of affordable housing. Fixing one component without also fixing the others has a host of consequences. In the case of multifamily real estate investments, imposing the rent controls could have the following effects. It could drive investors and lenders away from Philadelphia, potentially reducing the overall assessed value of real estate and tax base. It could cause landlords to defer maintenance, not fixing the leaking roof, plumbing, et cetera, thereby reducing the value of the existing housing stock and creating unsafe or unhealthy conditions. It could stifle the development of new affordable housing and it could cause mortgage or loan defaults. In that end, the private sector investment is predicated upon consistent public policy and a clear level of confidence that the balance of risk reward will not be tilted unexpectedly towards an increased risk. Virtually all private sector investments provide that, provide risks that investors must consider before moving forward. Adding to that risk after the fact is not a sustainable business model. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you too.
All right. Ms. Shields, can you read the next name on the list?
Andre Del Valley.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Brooks, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you state your name for the record and proceed with your comment, please?
Sure. Uh, good afternoon, uh, Councilmember Brooks and members of the Housing Neighborhood Development and Homes Committee. My name is Andre Del Valley. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association. Locally here in Philadelphia, we represent over thirty-eight thousand units and forty-nine property management companies. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to testify on today's resolution, um, which was introduced back in January twenty-three of twenty-twenty, uh, at the peak of the COVID-nineteen global pandemic. We appreciate the, the opportunity to put our comments on record. As stakeholders like the Pennsylvania Apartment Association, we're not invited to speak at today's hearing as one of the largest stakeholders that would be impacted by any future legislation. Um, the Pennsylvania Apartment Association has cross-collaborated a number of policies from assisting flood victims, um, to assisting resettlement efforts for Afghan refugees and preventing housing instability during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. While today's, uh, hearing is an important conversation, it's a conversation that should be a balanced one, that brings all stakeholders together to the table to find innovative solutions, not simply a one-sided conversation that limits one side to two minutes after panelists were given ten minutes to testify. The reality is that state legislators understand that rent control is counterproductive to achieving affordable housing, which is why thirty-seven states prohibit municipalities from imposing ceilings on rents. It's rare for economists across the political, political spectrum to agree on public policy. However, rent control is one of the few subjects that bridges this divide. Economists from Milton Friedman to Paul Krugman have opposed the regulation on rents. And according to a poll of economists by the American Economic Review, a resounding ninety-three percent agree that a ceiling on rents reduces the quantity and the quality of housing available. Rent control can and will, especially following the economic impacts of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, exasperate the income inequality across our city in several ways. First, rent control will lead to a misallocation of limited resources as many housing providers will not be able, be able to invest in their routine maintenance or improvement of their property as they cannot charge market, market rents. These price controls merely exasperate the issue by making apartments These price controls merely exasperate the issue by making apartments housing uh by making apartment housing unaffordable. It negatively impacts the housing market by discouraging construction of new co- new housing, expediting the deterioration and loss of existing housing, and diminishing the value of investment properties. When this decrease in rental housing stock coincides with increased demand, it leads to the increased cost for consumers. This will have a direct impact on the quality and availability of units in our housing stock across Philadelphia, impacting our BIPOC and lower-income communities the most. Rent control does not only adversely impact consumers, it also places heavy burdens on state and local governments. The reduction in property values that result from rent control leads to a decline in property tax revenue. The revenue decrease occurs when government expenditures increase as large bureaucracy bureaucracies administer administer and enforce new regulations. The creation of new regulatory body would necess- necessitate the reallocation of budgetary funding and could put a strain on core government services. If the goal of today's hearing is to work with the private sector to find innovative solutions to address the housing affordability challenges, the Pennsylvania Apartment Association would welcome the opportunity to work with this legislative body, as well as Senator Dillon, who testified earlier today, on innovative solutions in lieu of trying to
Mr. Del Valley, you you are at well beyond your two minutes.
Okay, if I could just have ten more seconds. I'm on my last line here, Councilmember. I I think, you know, the fact that folks had uh ten minutes. I'll take ten more.
Well, you have organized thirty minutes worth of testimony, and I really appreciate your skills. So I'm gonna give you to finish your comment right at the end of your testimony.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Um, I would like to also encourage uh fully so the council to activate uh the parameters of Bill one seven zero seven one nine, which allows city council to commission a financial impact study on the effects of rent control in Philadelphia prior to any vote being taken. Uh, thank you for, Councilmember, and I appreciate the extension. Thank you so much for the ability to testify today.
Thank you so much. Have a great day. Uh, Ms. Shields, can you read the next person for testimony?
Matthew Braden.
Mr. Braden, are you online?
Mr. Braden is not online.
Okay. Aaron, I'm sorry. Ms. Shields, can you can you read the next person? Council support tech. What is that? Aaron Dwyer, are you online?
Hi, Councilwoman. This is Aaron Dwyer. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Uh, good afternoon, Councilperson Brooks. Members of the Housing Neighborhood and Development Committee, my name is Erin Dwyer, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the General Building Contractors Association, also known as TBCA. TBCA is one of the region's oldest and largest contractor associations with a membership of over three hundred commercial, industrial, institutional, general contractors, subcontractors, material suppliers, and construction service firms throughout the greater Philadelphia region. I thank you for the opportunity today to testify on this resolution as we wish to add the voices of our members to share that Philadelphia is the wrong place for rent control. Philadelphia's deep poverty and affordable housing shortage requires real solutions and immediate actions. TBCA stands ready to bring the construction industry to the table with City Hall and other stakeholders to work to address these urgent crises. But we need to learn from what has and has not worked across the country. Time and time again, rent control has demonstrated is the wrong solution for housing shortages. I will let others talk about the harmful effects it will have on many small businesses and landlords in the city and the likely repercussions of higher rents if rent control is imposed. TBCA is, of course, a subject matter expert on the construction industry, and numerous studies have shown that rent control discourages investors from starting new construction, which would limit the city's overall supply of housing while also having a devastating impact on the thousands of hard-working Philadelphians whose jobs rely on construction and maintenance of housing. Philadelphia should learn from the mistakes of other communities and find real solutions that can keep rents low while encouraging responsible housing stewardship. TBCA's members employ thousands of workers in the Philadelphia region, and we pay a fair and living rate at a union work to our union workforce, consequently paying millions of dollars in taxes. Our members have built this city, and we want to succeed, but rent control is not the answer. Thank you for your time today, Councilwoman, and for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Um, can you, Ms. Shields, can you Shields, can you read the next person registered to speak?
Gary Jonas.
Hello, Councilwoman. Thanks for having me and thanks for having the hearing. Um, my name is Gary Jonas. I'm the President of the Building Industry Association. Um, hopefully, you know, over the years, you have gotten to understand my passion for affordable housing in the city and how important I think it is to the city. And, you know, as we listen to the testimony from everybody, we heard lots of stories about bad landlords, landlords without licenses, buildings with structural issues, real problems that were that were heartbreaking to listen to. And I think it only illustrates the point that our most in-needs citizens are living in units that aren't, you know, up to snuff. And the reason they're not up to snuff is because they're not charging enough rent, unfortunately, to be able to maintain those properties. And it just creates more problems. And so our concern is how do we provide affordable housing without it being a rent mandate that might amplify the problem instead of helping the problem? So, um, you know, we have discussed in the past ways to do this, and we believe as an organization we can help present solutions to the problem, different things with SROs, different ways to work um with accessible dwelling units within owner-occupied properties. We would love to be part of creating a solution to the affordable housing problem, and we think that we can be, and we think that a lot of the other people on this call would be great in that role. And a committee to look at how to deliver more affordable housing would be great. We just don't see rent control as the best way to get there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jonas, for your testimony. Ms. Shields, can you read the next person signed up for comment?
Sarah McGinnis.
Good afternoon, Councilman Brooks. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Can you proceed? State your name for the record and then proceed with your comments, please.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon. My name is Sarah McGinnis. I'm the Executive Director of NAAP Greater Philadelphia, representing developers, owners, and related professionals in office, industrial, and mixed-use real estate. I am here today to write an abbreviated testimony in what was submitted in interest of time regarding Resolution Number two zero 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 five seven, authorizing hearings to explore rent control in the city of Philadelphia. We believe officials usually pursue rent control policies with the best intentions. They seek to help tenants by making rent more affordable. Unfortunately, these policies often have the opposite effect. Rent control in the long run decreases affordability, increases gentrification, and has negative impact on surrounding neighborhoods. Philadelphia is a majority-minority city with a significant racial wealth gap. Implementing a rent control policy would only increase the gap. It's important to also remember the impact on our tax base. Rent control drives down property values, which in turn could reduce property tax revenues going to the city and school district. There are better solutions to the affordability crisis. The city and the Philadelphia Housing Authority have supported programs like the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program and Housing Choice Vouchers. PHA established a program to incentivize landlords who rent to residents with vouchers. As you know, this year marks the tenth anniversary anniversary of the city city council's creation of a land bank to ensure that vacant properties can be turned into homes or for other uses. Through the land bank, you are increasing the supply of affordable homes rather than trying to artificially limit rent. This approach, in the view of NAAP, is crucial, and we would support the land bank's expansion. There are other options, but these are a few examples of effective and responsible approaches that we respectfully suggest should be the focus of your efforts. Let's tread carefully when navigating the difficult waters of affordable housing. A policy like rent control may sound promising on the surface, but its unintended consequences, a drop in the available supply of rental housing, and an increase in rental prices throughout Philadelphia can hurt the very residents who you are trying to help. Thank you for your opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much for your time. Ms. Shields, can you read the next person registered for public testimony?
Cheryl Sitman.
Madam Chair, that completes our public comment list for today.
Oh, great. Let me find my Oh, okay. If there aren't any additional questions or comments from members of the committee, I want to just make one comment that the structure of the hearing, we invited our most vulnerable constituents and housing experts to support their testimony. Some of the organizations that signed up for public comment towards the end were folks that we already are in conversation with around not just rent control, but affordable housing in general. And their comments are recognized on a regular on internal meetings, and I do appreciate them wading into this conversation because I do believe in a balanced conversation around rent control, and I appreciate them logging on today. But I just wanted to be clear for the record that we entered into this conversation um to really to provide support for the voices that usually do not get heard um in in City Hall and just in general. So I appreciate everyone's time. Madam Chair, would you like to take over at this point and close us out?
Yes, um, thank you so much. Uh, there being no further questions um from members of the committee and no other witnesses to testify, I will ask, is there anyone else present in this hearing whose name we have failed to call and that wishes to offer testimony on the resolution being considered today? Hearing none. This concludes the business before the committee on housing, neighborhood development, and the homeless. Um, I want to thank um Councilmember Brooks for the resolution um and for this vital, vital discussion. We can tell how, you know, by how many people participated and shared their stories and called in for public comment, um, just what interest this is um in the city. And thank you to everyone who participated and everyone who is watching at home. Have a great day, everybody.
Have a good day. Thank you, everyone.
Bye bye.